Everyone who's on the Teams meeting, if you can hear me clearly, can you just put your hand up in the video? Yes, it looks like everybody can hear us.
Okay, good evening, or pardon me, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, July 28. I wish to welcome all of council, staff, as well as our presenters to today's Committee of the Whole. I do wish to begin by acknowledging that we are gathered and meeting today on the territory of the South Nation. So we'll look firstly for council for item three, Ministerial Order M192. That council is holding this meeting without members of the public in attendance in accordance with Ministerial Order M192, as council chambers does not have the capacity to safely accommodate the unknown number of public participants wishing to attend, and that council is committed to ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability through the submission of written feedback and the provision of live and recorded broadcasts of the meeting. So we're in Committee of the Whole, I'll look for one mover, please. Moved by Councilor Bateman. Any discussion? See none, all in favor? Opposed, it's carried unanimously. Item four is our approval of the agenda, so here we have, I'm looking for the agenda to be approved as it is presented, please. Moved by Councilor Betos. Any discussion from anyone? Anyone? See none, all in favor? Opposed, that too is carried unanimously. So item five, first up here is a delegation from B.C. Transit and SUC Local Area Transit Plan. Yes, staff?
Worship on the agenda, I believe we were going to put 6.1 before 5.
That's what we amended on the agenda, is to bring the OCP update forward.
Yeah, how about that? Okay. See, if I don't have a post it flagging it, I clearly am not aware of it. So, I guess in that case, since we made a change, we're going to item six, which is the OCP Update Engagement Strategy and Work Plan.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Before staff provides council OCP, I'd just like to introduce our OCP consultants, Jennifer Fixx and Lucas Huzzles-Mongo from Dialogue. Jennifer is the project lead, and for the project, working closely with the district staff, and helps to facilitate key meetings and oversee all deliverables. Lucas is the project manager and is responsible for day-to-day activities related to the project. Lucas works in tandem with Jennifer on managing the development of deliverables and in the execution of the project. Thank you both for joining us today. With that, I'll hand it over to Catherine, our senior planner, who is the district's project manager for the official community plan review.
Good afternoon, everyone. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here to introduce the first topic for Committee of the Whole today, and to provide a little bit of an update on what staff's been up to since awarding the contract at the end of May. So shortly after awarding the contract, about mid-June, Dialogue initiated a kickoff meeting with staff. The point of this meeting was to come to mutual understanding related to the scope of the work, the schedule, and the project deliverables. So we intend to use really good project management tools so that we know exactly where we are in the process and in the project, based on the deliverables that have been completed, and then we're going to tie that back to the timeline and the budget throughout the whole project. We also talked about potential uncertainties in the year ahead, and discussed how we can mitigate those concerns, and how best to connect with people and different groups in the community to come up with the best possible outcomes, not just for participation, but ultimately for the whole project. Since the kickoff meeting, staff have been working towards transferring a large amount of geospatial data, as well as a number of studies, reports, and compiling previous engagement work that was undertaken in 2017. Because engagement is going to be key throughout each phase of the OCP project, we have Dialogue with us today to talk about their approach to engagement, as well as to provide you with an outline of the work plan. So this is an opportunity to introduce the consulting team to you, and to allow you to dive into the OCP a bit, ask questions, learn a little bit about what to expect over the next 18 months. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jennifer and Lucas, who will walk you through where we're at and give you an idea of where we're going.
Great, thank you Catherine. Can everybody hear me? Right, okay. Thank you Catherine, and thank you Matthew, and good afternoon, Mayor and council. It is such a privilege to be here with you today, and to be working with you on this really exciting project. You know, we're biased for planners, but we see OCPs as generational opportunities to create visions for the future, and then to create the policy needs to bring that vision to life. So congratulations to you on embarking on this. And just to have introduction, as was already said, Lucas and I work at Dialogue. Dialogue is an interdisciplinary practice of landscape architects, architects, planners, engagement specialists, earth designers, engineers. And we used to say that we work from five studios, four across Canada, one in San Francisco, but now we think we work across a hundred studios, because almost everyone is working from home. Most of the folks working with you on this project, however, are based further in Musque Williams, Kwamish, Lebatu territory. So Lucas will walk through an overview of the session, but at a high level, our big hope today is to create space for you, to offer your insights, your knowledge, and your aspirations, that will help guide us through the project. And to kickstart that conversation, we just want to offer a bit of context around this journey we're embarking together. So Lucas, I'll ask you to go to the next slide. So what is an OCP? I think probably everyone has a sense of what an OCP is, just to ensure we're on the same page. Really, from our perspective, an OCP provides the community an opportunity to articulate a long-range vision for the future, which is a first goal, and objectives around which SUC will create and implement its policies, and align other decisions as well. So this is the fun and inspiring part of the project, the honeymoon phase, in which we get to have a blue-sky conversation with the community around aspirations and priorities. Next one, Lucas. But at its heart, an OCP is a land-use plan. So legislation requires that we identify the key location, the amount, the type, and intensity of residential land uses, as well as the location type and intensity of commercial, industrial, institutional, agricultural, recreational, and public utility land uses. But there are also other important requirements, such as the protection of land that is environmentally sensitive, policies around affordable rental special needs housing, establishing greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets, and the policies and actions around how they will achieve. So in this way, the OCP, yes, is about land use, but it's also about, you know, environment, sustainability, equity. So in this way, the OCP is for everyone. It's not just for planners, it's not just for the district, it's for all of the community. And then finally, Lucas, the last one here, as part of the OCP, we have development permit areas that are designated. So these are essentially design guidelines, as they relate to a suite of topics ranging from energy and water conservation to the form and character of development. And so these things are so crucial for, not only sustainability, resilience, but also the look and feel of our communities. So these will help us identify and preserve the things we cherish about our community, and then also tackle the things head-on that need to change. So that's what an OCP is in a nutshell. Next slide, Lucas. And I just, I think it's apparent why it's important, and surely you have your own thoughts and wisdom around why an OCP is important, but I just want to share one story with you. We worked a few years ago with the municipality in the B.C.'s Fraser Valley on their new OCP, and they wanted their OCP to be game-changing. And so we began with the visioning exercise with the community, and with their stakeholders, and internally with council and with staff, and a lot of the words and ideas that they shared with us up conjured up images similar to the one you see on the left. So people talked about walkable communities, vibrant streets, healthy people, social connections, green streets, this sort of thing. And then when we look back at the OCPs that they had adopted in the decades before, so multiple, looking back at multiple OCPs, the vision actually wasn't fundamentally different from what we were hearing through this visioning. And yet, what you see in this community is the image on the right. So there's, so it's, this is the main street of this community, it's going through the heart of their city's center, and of all the census metropolitan areas in Canada, this city's mode share, so the percentage of trips taken by car was the highest in the country. So there's this incredible and longstanding disconnect between what people wanted in their community, the vision, and then what they were getting. So this is important, and this was important to them, because, you know, land use policy is climate policy. We know that one of the greatest contributors to greenhouse gas emissions within municipal jurisdictions is transportation. So we know that land use and urban design directly impact the transportation choices that people make in their neighborhoods. This is important because land use policy is health policy. We know that in walkable neighborhoods, people are less likely to be obese and to suffer from illnesses that can be related to lifestyles such as type 2 diabetes. This is important because land use policy is social policy. We know that in neighborhoods that have a mix of local shops and services, residents are more likely to trust their neighbors and to feel belonging. We know that land use affects different people's abilities to age in their neighborhoods. We know that it affects a vulnerable folk's ability to access amenities and services. So land use, as unexciting as it might initially seem, is the unsung hero of city building, of district building, of community building. So it's an incredible opportunity that we're all working on together right now. And to bring it back to SUC, just kind of to let you know the conversation around this disconnect in this other community, some blame this disconnect on the developers, you know, the developers weren't building as they should, they blamed it on city staff, they said city staff didn't know what they're doing, they blamed it on council, they said the politicians lacked the integrity to make the right decisions. But when we kind of boiled it down and really looked at the issues, we realized, you know, some of the biggest problems actually were the actual OCP itself. And recognizing that hope is not a plan, your plan needs to have some rigor to it. So for this process, you know, we're inviting you to think about growth as being precious, and that we need to come to understand how much we're going to likely be seeing in this community over the life of the OCP, and then then think of land as a precious and a finite resource, and growth as a currency that we carefully manage and strategically distribute in a way that allows us to reach our goals. So it might mean that we decide that we spend all of that currency within an existing footprint, and it might mean that we have to say no to some forms of developments, recognizing that saying no to one thing is saying yes to another. It might mean that we want to embrace some bold thinking and make some difficult choices. So these are, these are the things we want to get from you today, you know, what kind of choices do you see yourself making through this OCP? So I'll hand it over to Lucas, and just again say how excited we are to be working with you, and to see how this process unfolds in SUC under your leadership and under the leadership of your staff.
Thanks Jennifer, for that lovely introduction, and thank you everyone for allowing us the opportunity to speak today. So we want to start by communicating what we envision as the purpose of today's session. So we really see this as an initial conversation where we can learn a bit about yourselves and about the community that you represent. So we'd like to learn about the aspirations and expectations for the OCP process, we'd like to learn about some of the key opportunities and challenges facing SUC, both today and into the future. We'd also like to learn about what success might look like for your community through this OCP process. We've also included an agenda, so we've gone through the welcoming introductions, we'll be providing a bit of an overview of the OCP process itself. We have some questions as well for a group discussion, and then we'll finally recap and provide a bit of summary of next steps over the next couple of months. In terms of project timeline, we've proposed a four-phase timeline, starting with this first phase of building a baseline. So this is really about building a baseline understanding of how SUC performs today, like what are the existing conditions for SUC? And there's a few different ways that we do this. One is reviewing existing plans and policies, so reviewing what's already been created to date. Another way is through demographic analysis, so looking at current population as well as projected, looking at land use projections, looking at geospatial analysis as well across a variety of metrics, so walkability, access to daily needs, urban form, connectivity, and such. And we do that in order to create this baseline of understanding as we move through the process, in order to reference what we're proposing in relation to the existing conditions. And so following the baseline, we'll be moving into the vision and growth scenario phase two, in which we'll be asking the public about their ideas, both large and small, about the future of their community, and we'll be using that input to develop draft vision and guiding principles for the OCP. We will also be, in this phase, developing a series of growth scenarios based on the demographic analysis and growth projections, to envision what future options might be for SUC over the timeline of the OCP. And then we'll also be evaluating these growth scenarios in reference to the baseline. So given the metrics that are going to be developed in phase one, we'll be able to compare the options between a proposed growth scenario and the existing conditions. Following this, so taking a preferred scenario from public engagement, as well as the refined vision and guiding principles, we'll begin to draft the OCP in the third phase, which will then be taken to the public for review and feedback as well. Following the creation of the draft OCP, as well as review from the public, as well as internal staff, we'll be looking to refine the OCP and look toward revision and approval in the fourth phase. And so something that we wanted to highlight throughout this entire process is we'll be looking to approach deep, what we call deep engagement. So this is really in-depth conversations about some of the complexities of an OCP, with partners, with stakeholders, with staff, with certain groups, just to inform how we're approaching the OCP. And this will be complemented by what we also call broad engagement, so that's more of a general level of engagement with more people, arguably a more service level, so not everyone necessarily has the time or the capacity to engage on an OCP at an in-depth level, but we want to provide a diversity of opportunities for people to provide their input into this process. And so we also summarize why we believe engagement is important beyond the legislative requirements to engage in an OCP. So we believe in the ability to raise awareness and spark interest in the process, to build capacity. So we see this as an education opportunity, both for us to learn from the community, but also for the community to potentially learn about what an OCP is, and how they might fit into that, to obtain input on proposed ideas, to create a sense of ownership, we also find is really important in these processes, because once the OCP is developed, there needs to be the people there to take it forward and implement it. Something we've already heard is this idea, or an opportunity to cultivate a sense of identity in SUC, so the OCP could be an avenue in which to start to host those conversations, and then to establish and strengthen relationships. So again, going back to the sense of buy-in, that we need people to really champion the OCP as it moves forward. We've also included a list of some of the folks that we might be engaging with through this process, so citizens in the general public, so that's speaking to the more broad engagement stream, stakeholders, interest groups, council committees, product partners, including sub-first nation, which we believe is a really strong, important piece of the engagement, the OCP advisory committee, so representing a diversity of topics and perspectives, as well as city staff and technical advisory committee. And so something I want to highlight is that we've provided a preliminary community contact list as part of the agenda and report today, but we're hoping that through this process, we're able to get feedback on whether we've missed any voices or any groups in that preliminary list. So those are the folks that we'll be reaching out to through this engagement process. So that's something that we look forward to, is your view of that preliminary draft. And now might be actually a good time, before we move into questions, whether you have any questions for us on what we've presented so far?
I think we're good to continue on?
We'll probably have a million questions somewhere along the line, but right now, just...
The council chambers have muted right now, if there's questions.
I said we're good to keep going?
Wonderful, thank you. So this first question, it's quite high-level, but we're hoping to start to better understand what matters most to you and your community, and recognizing that we could spend probably a couple days or a couple weeks answering this, we're hoping you could just share some of the priorities from your perspective for SUC as a community.
Go ahead, Councilor Betos.
Yeah, I think what's important to me is a sense of pride. I know in a lot of communities, some people are not ashamed, but a little low say, "Well, I'm from Langford, I'm from this." I want people to say, "I'm from SUC," and they're very, very proud of it. We're halfway there now, I think, and a new OCP and a new vision for town would give those people a sense of pride. I think that's part of our community.
Councilor Bateman?
Yeah, well, my short answer is, I agree, in your RFP proposal, you noted that the community is at a watershed moment, and I think the community at large recognizes that, that we're in this moment of about to become a city. Growth is projected to continue more or less unabated over the next 20 years. How are we going to manage growth and remain consistent with the vision of the community that dates back through CRD local area plans and our previous two OCPs, to retain a town, densification of the town center, managed growth rural character elsewhere, and the motto of "Let SUC be SUC, we don't want to be Langford." And I think that's the...
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah to that. And that's a real advantage, because Langford and Colward are growing like topsy, perhaps we can be a quieter ancillary to them.
Thank you. Councilor Lajanos?
Yeah, one of our, one of our biggest challenges is that we have a provincial highway that kind of divides our area that's known as the town center in half, and there's been a longstanding desire to move the downtown toward the water, and the, historically, the plan was to have the highway moved north, and that the corridor that was intended for the highway has been developed, suburban development has kind of taken over that area, and it would be my desire to kind of reserve that corridor, so that the highway could someday be moved, so that we can develop the town toward the water.
Councilor Loggins?
Thanks for the initial walkthrough there. I don't have much to add on top of the OCP review that we did in 2017, I think that was really well done, so that would be, those would be my top three, protect the environment, celebrate community, and build economy.
Councilor St. Pierre?
I would just reiterate what Councilor Loggins has just pointed out, I think managing our growth wisely, and getting our local economy going, and making sure we don't lose our identity in the process, is really what we should be trying to do. I'm also disappointed that the municipal charter doesn't allow us to rename this the official climate plan, but that's just me, I've been told we can't do it, but that's me.
Thank you, councilors. For myself, it's the challenge of managing the growth that we know is coming. How do we become more of a complete community, so that we can become more resilient on our own and not be as reliant for folks to travel out? There's a lot of unique character in our community, and I would not want to lose that as we progress through our plans. So it's cherishing those unique assets and the character, the creativity that we have, and building upon it. Sort of in a nutshell, and then I agree with the other comments that have been made, and it's just, you know, recognizing that we have challenges with the highway and the like, but, you know, we need more industrial lands identified and put into service, so that we can provide more opportunities here locally. That's missing from our community. We'll maybe leave it for now, and there'll be more to come. Mr. McInnes?
Thank you, worship. I'd really like to answer this question as well, because the discussions that we've had as a group, sort of getting our ducks in a row for the OCP, was the idea of a broad OCP or a very narrow-focused OCP. So my, what matters most to me with this OCP is that the aspirational elements are achievable. So I hope that with our planning staff and with our consultants, there has been discussions around the required statements and plan designations that are required in the community charter, and those things that are optional, because we've got some very good plans for things. But with my experience with OCPs is, we get to this point, and we all get very excited, and the product of that is something that is just not achievable. It is something that is, you know, filled with statements and goals, and often are not checked off. So what matters most to me is that we continue to try and keep focused, and make sure that we don't get too ambitious on what an OCP can be, and stick more to the requirements under the charter of what an OCP needs to be.
Thank you for raising that, Mr. McInnes, I do agree with that statement. Just in my experience here, we have seen, you know, an OCP that was drafted, then it needed to be reworked, and then it was amended many times, and then the vision is lost, because it's something to try to keep everyone at the table happy, and I don't think that's realistic to do. And then, of course, any council coming after can easily amend it and make changes, and then that stalls the whole realizing of the vision, because now we're arguing over language in a certain paragraph. Councilor Loggins?
Slightly off-track, but just going back to what Councilor St. Pierre was saying, Campbell River has done a sustainable official community plan. I hear Councilor Bateman nodding his head on that one. So they define that as an SOCP, which addresses the scope of an OCP, and also integrates the three pillars of sustainability, which are economy, society, and culture, environment. So that fits well with our top three needs that we identified in 2017, so that could be an avenue we look at.
Councilor St. Pierre?
I didn't see this as being necessarily germane to the question itself, but I think it is. And one of the things that I'm hoping for in the process, and what matters to me, is also that the community be brought onsite. So in terms of the capacity building elements and the participatory planning, it's really, as was mentioned by Lucas, the buy-in. I think that we need to get the stakeholders, for example, for industrial lands, for developing our commercial areas, for all of that stuff, onsite and get their input in the process, so we can actually implement, as Mr. McInnes was saying. I think implementation is critical, and getting those stakeholders onsite in the process is important.
And just one other piece I'll add is an element of ground-truthing. So I guess what I mean by that is, if you looked at a map of SUC, you may sit there from an aerial view and say, "Oh, this will be the great place to put this, this, or this." But when you actually get onto the ground, there may be a privately-held parcel that is not going to change, it could be in the agricultural land reserve, it may have frontage right onto a highway, it may be industrial lands that needs to be cleaned up, so how can you really, so the, I'm not saying it's impossible, but when you say to someone in the OCP, "Well, in 50 years, it'll be X," it's too far out to appreciate, really. So when you actually, and then sometimes we've approved things in chambers here, but that isn't exactly what was developed on the ground. So how that happens through a process is still a bit of a mystery to myself, because that wasn't what the zoning was, and something else happened instead. So then how, so what is actually on the ground here, and what could it become? If there's environmentally sensitive areas, then maybe an industrial park isn't the best match for that particular location, because there's other factors concerning the environment that would take priority. So then we need to look for a different place, or in our current OCP, there is descriptions of a tech park, which is not the way that IT has grown and evolved, and certainly, it's not possible to achieve, but then that became a barrier, perhaps, to be able to realize that particular area within our community, because what it was striving to do is just not possible, from either an IT perspective, infrastructure, or otherwise. So it has to be more relevant. It's okay to plan for the future, but otherwise, like to create a 50-year plan is really, the pandemic is even changing what and how things are. And just the impact of things like Amazon make a big difference to how our economy changes. We have to be nimble and open to that and not be, I don't know, I'm kind of rambling now, but I'll just leave it at that. I think you get my point. Go ahead, Counselor Bateman.
I'll jump in again. I agree with Mr. McInnes that it needs to be a practical, workable document. At the same time, it can also, through, because land use decisions made now will impact us 50 years from now, ideally. So I hope that it will capture a bigger picture vision for where Suuk will be over the next, maybe, well, 10 years is clearly the lifespan of this OCP approximately. And then looking forward to what might be outcomes from 10 years of good decision-making for the future of the community. I did, I really appreciated Ms. Fix's opening commentaries and this idea that hope is not a plan. I particularly like that because the 2010 OCP, which when I first read it, I fell in love with, I thought it was a great document, filled with wonderful aspirational vision for a progressive community by the sea. And yet, as, yeah, it was flawed and perhaps too diverse. So a document that really, truly complements and embodies all this wonderful material that has been produced over the last decade and over the last couple of years in particular.
Okay. Counselor Beddows?
Yeah, I just want to go on to Counselor Bateman there. I mean, we used that 2010 OCP as a bit of a guideline, but not only what was looking good, but what was unachievable. And I like their CAOs is, you know, make sure that what we decide on is achievable and not pie in the sky. I had nothing but people coming back to me about the old OCP, that it wasn't realistic. So I like the way it's gone. Thanks.
Okay. I think we're, anything else from anyone? Counselor St. Pierre?
Just something really quick that was in our strategic plan, and that's the idea of having a seven-generation kind of vision, just looking well into the future in terms of, this is the community we're building for the young people who, you know, are going to grow into it and so on and so forth. So recognizing their needs and what it's going to look like, hopefully, in 50 or 100 years. And I think that that generational perspective is really important, what we're doing.
Okay. Next question.
Thank you all for those great and balanced ideas. Appreciate the context that you provided today. The next question. So we're hoping, ask, what is the one message we need to convey and why? So recognizing the importance of framing messages and communication. What are the key messages that we need to be communicating through this process?
Counselor Loggins?
And the first thing that came to my mind was giving people a sense of the big picture because I think when we do engagement activities like this, a lot of people focus on nitty-gritty details of what their neighbor might be doing. And while it is, it can be helpful, it kind of detracts from the overall final document, I think. So if we can really communicate to the community what we're trying to achieve and what the final goal is, knowing that many people may not know what an OCP is or have read the current one, or even may contribute but may not even read the final version of this one either.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how to wordsmith this into a nice sentence, but similar, sort of building on what Counselor Logan said, is just conveying why this is such an important time to hear from residents. So what is working well in your neighborhood, what isn't and why? And what we would like to support and see more of, and just getting that diverse range of opinions. I would agree that many don't know what an OCP is or appreciate just how much of an impact it has in terms of guiding how our growth is. So it's like, oh, yeah, you know, it's this or that. No, well, this then actually becomes an important land use planning document as we receive applications for building and development and so forth. So it is really important to receive that feedback and just to try to get as much feedback from everyone that we can, those that are new and those that have been here all, whether you've been here for a month or lived here for generations, your perspective is still very important. We all live here and then will share the future together. So that's, you know, this is a very foundational land use planning document.
Counselor Beddows?
I think maybe I can just recap that it is that I would like to see conveyed to the people of Suuk, our citizens, your input is essential and will be valued. So we need, and I think that's basically what you're saying, and this is your community to the people of Suuk. And your input is so essential, and we need to get everybody involved and excited. It's their future.
Counselor St. Pierre?
I'd like to follow up on, I think, what Counselor Beddows and Mr. McInnes were both saying, and that's just in terms of focus and realism. I'd like people to be able to look at the OCP and feel that it's actually realistic. And for that, I think we also need a message. Part of it is educating the public in terms of what we can actually do and what's not possible. So I suspect that part of the reason why unrealistic goals and visions are potentially in the OCP is because there isn't a clear understanding of what we can actually do jurisdictionally speaking and what's actually possible. So I think this is also an opportunity to say, this is what we can do. These are the different possibilities. These are different aspirations that are possible. Nope, that one's just right outside. That's not something that district can do. I mean, often there's a sense that we could do just about anything, and then other people feel we can't do anything. But, you know, it's actually somewhere in between, and I'd really like this to be an opportunity to educate our community on what's possible, to make this a really useful document.
No comments? Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, I'll agree with all of the above. I think it's important to say, we're looking forward to hearing from you, while at the same, to the public, while we have also heard very strongly from you over the years and in this Plan Suuk Now process, which Counselor Logan's referred to at the outset, because those have the three big things and then the 12 supplementary desires as, so we don't, we want to just say, you've been heard and we're going to keep listening. And what we hear, and what, I think the key message is that what we're doing here is creating a very realistic Suuk Smart Growth Master Plan to accommodate the waves of growth coming our way. And again, this reference to Langford, we don't want to be Langford, but we can learn from Langford in that back in 1995, with the help of Avi Friedman, the community planner, they came up with a master plan that continues to be tweaked and rolled out to this day. So hopefully, we can do something similar.
Counselor Lajanos?
Yeah, on the topic of we're creating, creating something for the future and for future generations, and I guess I have a question, and that is, how do you intend to engage the youth in this process?
Will that come later, or is that something that, like, later today in the agenda that we'll talk about? Is that question about youth engagement, or did you want to answer that now?
I can hop in, Lucas. Do you want me to? So, yeah, we have a working engagement plan in place right now. And as was already mentioned, there are a number of stakeholders that were identified. Youth, we find, typically in planning processes, we can't count on them to show up at events. You know, understanding with the current pandemic situation, some of our engagement will be online. Sometimes it's difficult even to get their participation through online means, although we have found, if you offer a prize in a survey, youth participation skyrocket. But something we've done in the past that we could certainly explore for this process is actually reaching out to schools directly. So if we're all in, back to school, then actually going to school, getting youth to participate in community mapping exercises, for example, and to get their input directly from them and do that, you know, at different points in the process. Early on in the generative part of the project, we're actually seeing ideas, kind of in a more open-ended way. Through to the, you know, latter phase of the project, we actually have draft ideas, draft answers for input. So that's one way we've effectively reached youth in the past. But if there are ideas among yourselves around how to best happen to that youthful place for this process, we'd love to hear them.
Okay, just to respond that, it's off, it's not necessarily what is on the screen in front of us, but we've been doing a lot of different activities with our elementary schools. Pre-COVID, we would have a number of different school groups come and visit. They would visit chambers, they would walk over, sometimes have lunch with me, do, get into some debates in chambers and the like. And so in my conversations with teachers and the vice principals of our schools, I'd always sort of hoped that we could engage, you know, when I sometimes hear youth, I think of just the high school or maybe the middle school. But I certainly hope that this would also include our younger students, our elementary, including kindergarten and up. Their, the teachers were very interested in finding a way to make things specific for the grades because the learning is different. But all of these kids live here all the time. So while their parents may be commuting, they are in Suuk all day, often on weekends. And they grow up here and live here, even if their parents aren't. So they are very aware of what is happening in their neighborhoods. And sometimes we discount younger children as, well, they don't know this or not. No, they know. They can see when something on their street changes, and they will ask why this or that or these trees. They're very in touch with what their surroundings are. And in some ways, we cannot realize everything that they would like to see because sometimes it's what they're involved in. However, they're very aware of their community and what lies ahead. And they take advocacy action on matters that matter when you get 30 letters from grade four students. Pay attention to what they're saying because they're very in tune with what's happening. So I would just hope that we can find a way, depending on what education looks like come the fall, but there may even be a way to, if it is online, there may be, I think, an approach that we can take and we could go through the teachers. So one, one thing I've learned through this, through working with the students too, is that the notification will go out that the mayor is coming into the school. And then when I finish reading the story or whatever, there's an open question, and the students ask their question and their parents' question because they tell me both. I want to know this, but my dad also really wants to know about that. And they'll tell me, they're very blunt and straightforward about it, which is refreshing. So there was some thought that we could do some, to engage the parents, which are often the demographic that are not as connected in Suuk because they're just busy. They're commuting, they're in and out, they have everything they have to do, and sports and homework and everything. So they're very busy, is some way of doing an activity with the students. And then at this time, pre-COVID, the idea was, we can then also have an after-school thing. So when parents come in, they can then say, oh, hey, this is what your students have been working on in the gymnasium, come and add your feedback. And then you can also catch that group there in that way that have been more difficult to reach in the past. But also very valuable perspective on the life of what a commuter or a working parent is and how they're trying to manage everything. So I think that's where it'll be the conversation with the teachers and the principals at the schools to find out what the learning will look like come this fall, if it's a mix of in-class, virtual, how and when they invite visitors in or the like. But there is a real opportunity because when you capture those children, you will also capture their parents at the same time and potentially their grandparents as well. And that's sort of the group that often we struggle with trying to reach.
Counselor Loggins?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we really appreciate how like intelligent the youth in Suuk are. They're extremely intelligent and they're very aware of what's going on in our community. A while back, oh my gosh, like, probably 10 years ago now, I did a youth-friendly community engagement project, and we asked 70 of the grade 11 and 12 students who was going to leave Suuk, and I think all but three raised their hands. They all wanted to leave after graduation. And then we asked them who was going to return, and they all said yes. And, sorry, I get emotional when I say that. It's like, ah, they're so cool. But one of the biggest reasons they wanted to return, because we asked them, like, why? What makes you want to come back here? And they said, because of the trees and the environment. So, moment. So that really does like play with what we were talking about earlier about the environment being really important. It's not just because we all like to live in a place that's green, it's because we like to come back here as well and start our families here. Another thing that the group did was like identify places that they feel unsafe and discuss how to change those. And I think that's something that we can certainly do with them again because it really helps with the OCP to figure out where we can make big changes in our community and where sort of the bigger changes need to be made. And one of the ways you could do that outside of the school system, but which, by the way, the schools will be very, very supportive of this and want to be involved probably more than you will want them involved. But one way that they, that you could do it is by doing like block parties in neighborhoods. I know that our planning staff have done, some work in the past around like mapping potential future neighborhoods. And if we could look at those future neighborhoods as they were mapped out, not as they currently are, and then have like a block party there with a booth and a food truck or something like that, it could be a really good way to get people out in a COVID-friendly way, of course. But you may be able to get family involvement then, and also we have a large amount of homeschooled youth who are also really intelligent in this community and really focused on sustainability and food security and active transportation. So you might be able to capture a few different people that way as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Just to sort of, to add to Counselor Logan's comment about the youth that leave and then come back, a prime example of that is our local medical clinic that has had success retaining and recruiting health professionals. And when you actually talk to them, they, many have a connection to Suuk. Either went to school here or their partner did, and this is why they've chose to come here. And when every community is struggling to attract health professionals, and yes, we are still continuing to want to recruit more, we've had success because there is a strong connection from their childhood that is bringing them back here. So that is the piece that I don't want to see us lose, but it's very valuable. Another one to Counselor Logan's point is, we as a council put in a staircase near the elementary school that led down to the water. And if we'd listened to sort of the case, there's no parking there, and how will people drive there, and what is all these people? It wasn't about, the intent putting there was so that children have safe access to the water. That's who this was for, it was for the children, for those that are in kindergarten, grade one to grade five. Now these kids have an outdoor classroom, they're discovering the water, they know about the tide, they know about the marine environment, they're concerned about the garbage in there, they're angry about the waste that they see, and they want to see change. And these are grade two students that know more about the marine environment than their parents do and don't need to drive there because it's within walking distance of their school. So that has just opened up possibilities for young people. And then what does that mean as a community? Could we then explore what further advanced education may look like? How do we capture that and create future employment opportunities for young people? And it was one set of staircases to the water that is making this change occur in our community where very young kids are benefiting. Ebony's right, the youth here and the children are very intelligent people. Even four-year-olds are kind of scary sometimes.
Counselor St. Pierre?
I just wanted to follow up on something that Counselor Logan's was talking about, which is food trucks, on a lighter note. I think that fun and food, I spent way too much in a degree to find out that fun and food is really the way to get participation. And I'm hoping that there's going to be some room in the budget to actually provide pizza, which seems to bring people together. Okay, it's round, I don't know what it is, there's something about it, grab a slice. There's no dishes, you can come, answer a few questions, spend some time. There's no dishes, you can come, answer a few questions, spend some time, and feed yourself. So I'm hoping that there's going to be some budget for food.
There is even a community, and I can't remember what, well, we sort of did it here on New Year's Day for the levee that the mayor hosted, is we have the young children perform, and that draws in their parents. So I wonder if the Harmony Project students did not play, would this many people be in chambers on New Year's Day? I don't think so, they'd probably be sleeping in, but they will come in to see their parents, their children perform. So there was another community, and what they did to get more involvement is they, they had the students play music at the event, so then their parents would draw, it would draw, it was drawing out the crowd to come in and, and see. So there is a lot of talent here that, that we could draw upon. Okay, so we've sort of drifted a bit off of the, what is the one message we need to convey and why, but I still think it's important that we're inclusive as possible. Counsel, pardon me, Mr. McInnis?
Thank you, worship. Just real quickly for me, it's evident that growth is going to continue in Sook. So I think that if we're going to do justice to the OCP and use it as a mechanism to influence that growth, I don't think it's necessarily an important message at the front end, but an extremely important message at the back end of this project, is to talk about the cascading effect of the OCP and how, on its own, it's, it's not a tool to control. But if the implementation goes into things like the zoning bylaw and the subdivision of standards bylaw, and then on our own investments in our community, into our five-year financial plan and into our annual budget, we need to teach our community how to use this document in an effective way to keep us as local government accountable to it.
Very well said, Mr. McInnis. Anything else on number two? Nope, number three, please.
Thank you again for the generative conversation and all the wonderful ideas. So for the third, third and final question, if we dream big and act boldly, what can this OCP accomplish for Sook?
So I would like, I'll throw out there the development of the, the town center. We have vacant land in our town center with a view of the water. Like, isn't that, I think it's practically, like, what, how many communities can break that they have that? Like, it's not like there's heritage buildings that you need to work around, take down or whatever, like they're empty lands. So, right at the foot of Church Road being one, or one phase, when I think of Mariners' Village, that sitting. And the second one is some form of, for me, it's the cycle of waste to energy somehow, where we have the ability to manage our waste more efficiently. We don't have a transfer station here. Is there something more that can be done with the sewage sludge rather than trucking it and putting it into the landfill? Like, some of it will enter into the CRD stream, I suppose. So I don't know if the business scale is there, but we do need to look at what a transfer station looks like here for waste. And I'd really like to see people stop dumping everything in our parks and wild spaces. So not a very bold vision, but if people stop throwing their garbage in our parks, I'd be very happy with that. And eliminated it in a more environmentally conscious way. All that. Counselor Logan?
I think that what I've seen happen in some communities is they lose their sense of place and culture when you're just driving by through town. Like, we used to have that logger's pole up, that was a real good heritage item that showed like our, our heritage and a bit about the community, but right now, it's beautiful. I think the town center area has, has developed quite nicely so far, but there's still nothing aside from like the decorations we put in the, in the roundabout that really tells us where we are and why we're here. So I think that would be-
We have a Cambodian flag.
Oh goodness, yeah, our flag. That would be a good accomplishment.
Yep, good point. Counselor Beddows?
Yeah, I, what I'd like to see is a clear path forward. The last OCP and very ambiguous, there, there wasn't any clarity in it, one, one part contradicted another. I'd like to keep it simple, sort of the KISS principle, a lot of big words, a lot of big ideas, and, and not a whole lot of planning. I like to hopefully, when you do goals and things that we use, but I like the, the SMART principle, where you're specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. If we put each one of our goals, or aspirations or goals, whatever you want to call them, if we use that criteria, I think we'll produce something that is usable for the next 10 years. That's about it.
Counselor Bateman?
Well, in following up that, I'll just reframe this question. If we dreamed somewhat big and act kind of boldly, what can this OCP accomplish for Sook? I think we're, we're working towards evolving us out of being a bedroom community, which we are currently continuing to grow into, to become more of a complete community, as the mayor states. And I've written this out here, this OCP could define us clearly and competently as a progressive, small-town community that truly gets it, that the index of happiness is measured not by development activity, affluence in the number of different chain stores that can be squeezed into a new shopping mall, but rather by smart growth civic planning, local jobs, independent business in the circular economy, public-private nonprofit collaboration, waste reduction, recycling and reuse, green energy, affordable alternative and net-zero housing, reskilling education, regional food security, voluntary simplicity, and overall raising the index of happiness of the community. So that would be my, yeah, that's the dreaming big, and it's probably gone well beyond the parameters of what we're aspiring to here, but that kind of philosophical approach, which is, you know, I think generally speaking, North American society and late-stage capitalism recognizes that we've gone off track. So can Sook become, just embody all the best practices of community development here in, in this 21st century? Thank you.
Counselor St. Pierre?
One of the things that's come up recently in, in the short time that I've been on council, I've had some wonderful opportunities to learn about what communities actually need, and one word that surprised me was actually connection. A lot of us are actually touching on this, you know, in terms of, you know, connecting to heritage, connecting, you know, people in the community. The happiness index, I was surprised to find out that there was more happiness to be had in simply being connected either at a patriotic, patriotic level to your nation, or to your province, or to your region, to your town or city, to your village, to your neighborhood, to your family. And the less connection you had, the more miserable you were regardless of how much money you had. So you could pour lots of money into infrastructure for economic development and increasing affluence, and look, your property value's gone up, but you're still miserable. And ideally, what we want is people in Sook to continue smiling in Sook, continue being happy to be in Sook. I think that when we talk about an identity in Sook, my family and I moved here because people were smiling. We toured BC to find good communities, and people were smiling in Sook. I don't want that to change. So I guess this is not dreaming big or particularly boldly, but I think we need to maintain that sense of connection and improve that sense of connection in the face of growth. And whether or not that looks like enhancing neighborhoods, which has been implied, or what it looks like, I don't know exactly, but I think that we need to be looking ideally at how do we stay connected at all sorts of levels.
Counselor Lagenes?
Just laughing.
Okay.
I was gonna say, people-
Turn on your microphone.
People stopped smiling after you moved here, is that right?
Oh, dear. The other part I would sort of throw out here, and I, I asked this question early on when I first got elected to council, and we were looking at the draft OCP and what was missing then, and continues to, like, where is the heart? So someone answered, it's in the people. I'm like, yeah, I get that, but every town sort of has a, like, where is the heart of it? And suppose I'd, I'd come from a trip abroad where I was in Bel, I think it was Belgium, and there's actually a heart, like, there was this big heart sculpture, and that is the heart, and all pathways led to the heart of the city. And, but every, every town that we had visited, you would know, sort of knew you were in the heart of this. And then it reminds me of the, okay, I'll comment on Dr. Seuss, but when the Grinch stole Christmas, all the residents of Whoville still gathered together without their Christmas tree in the heart of their community, that's where they all went. And it didn't matter that the tree wasn't there anymore because that was where they all went. So where is that for us? And, and what would it look like? And what is the character? That was the comment that I agree with Counselor Logan's, our town center is becoming very beautiful, and we're finding ways to capture it, but we're also a very artistic and creative community. So aside from, like, where is the, the art? We have some that is, that is underway, but it would be great to sort of look at something a bit broader that we would see. And also we have a lot of craft emerging in Sook, so craft gin, craft beer, like bestsellers in the world, like world-class gin, which is a fact. They received that award and that label.
I love this.
Right? And-
It's a gin.
Craft cannabis, or I mean, well, that's what I've heard, is, is there. Arts and crafts and woodcraft, and a lot of, there's a lot of trades that are showcasing their craftsmanship in this house and the decor and what they're building and developing. So how do we find a way to sort of showcase that more? And then of course, while our park staff are really working on developing an excellent trail system for us and also finding and receiving approval from the Sauk Nation on Sankosha, the name places, how do we, we're on the Sauk's territory, but it's not visible to anyone. You don't know when, you may see their sign when you enter it, but there's nothing really that, that, that shows their, their heritage. We have some for more, the pioneers or settler, but nothing really that is recognizing the Sauk in any way. So be boldly, I would say that that would be more visible. I'm not saying we need a, a big gin bottle out front, but like Sukie Sam is in our gateway. He's sort of an iconic element here that we would see. The logger's pole, yes, it's been relocated, but it used to be in town and it's gone now. It was on private land, so that is still a challenge. And over in East Sook now, there's a wood crafter that's doing a beautiful Sasquatch. It's probably, what, nine feet tall? It's really big, you see it from the road, and so it's drawing people out there because of that character. And I think we have so much talent here, it's just, you'll miss it. We have the best fine art show on the island, but where is the artwork and where do we see that? And, and how can we find ways to, to do more with it? Even signage, we looked at sign trees with innovative sign trees at one point when we were reexamining the sign bylaw. And this would be sort of the frustration maybe, but that might change in working with the highways, but how can we put in more wayfinding signage that is, that grabs that crafty element that we see? And right now it's visible only in like the boat, when Sook was, had the boatification project, and the boats with the plantings arrived, it was unique character elements that brought forward, and some of the business owners have done that on their own. So it's, but it adds a really unique touch. And also that boldly, sometimes when you're in Sook or up Sook, you forget that the water is right there. And I remember, there's one goal that I had that I had to throw out the window temporarily is I wanted to attach a GoPro to my son's head so that when he's in the McDonald's and going up this climbing structure to see what he can actually see from the top, because the children that go all the way up to the top of the McDonald's lookout can see the harbor. But like, I'm not gonna go up there, like, I just, I can't, like physically, I just can't do it, I'm not going up there. But I'd like to see what he sees. So here's like our youngest kids going up to the top, and they have a 360 view of Sook from the top of this McDonald's climbing structure. And it would be interesting to see what that view, he tells me it's fantastic, and I have to believe him because I can't go up there after it, but he would see the water because he's up there telling me what he's looking at. And we don't see it, and we forget that this beautiful view is right there because it's blocked, when you're in street level, it's blocked by the grocery store. Counselor Bateman?
Well, your comments bring many, many thoughts to mind, as always, and I, I think there's something very paradoxical about Sook. You know, we're, we're, we've got all this history of blue-collar roots in the, in our natural environment. We're evolving into this, on the artisan side, into a bit of a sin city. Counselor St. Pierre has a good logo, what is that? Beer Bud and?
Beer Bud and Booze.
Hedonistic leisure.
Yes. And there's also this piece, back to the, the heart of Sook, is, is that we are a newly-recognized compassionate community, and we are, we are really, have done a lot of work to, to take care of our most vulnerable populations, and there is, through the Sook Multi-Belief Initiative, of which I'm a part, we've come up with a compassionate action plan that is also part of this, this beautiful big paradox of what Sook is. So Sin City, Staycation Sin City, I think that is, could be a huge draw for tourism if tourism ever returns.
Counselor Beddows?
One last comment, building on what Counsel Bateman was saying, is we were, used to be known as a bit of a redneck group, you know, loggers and fishermen, and, you know, if we had people in the park, we'd just send a bunch of loggers down and clear them out. But that era has finished. We are, we're transitioning to another area, and I, I like some of the comments I hear from my colleagues about art, and we have more to offer than the old days, and you can just go hack down a tree. So that, that is, but there's still an element of the old school, which we have to listen to as well as we transition to the new one. But it's interesting, I learned more from these things from you guys tonight, oh, sorry, from our consultant.
There's also the case of, we're surrounded by beautiful natural spaces, so how do we, so you have folks that come out here for a hike or, or a drive, but how do you make these more accessible to locals? So how, how do we connect our trail system so that you can, you can, you know, cycle to work and then go mountain biking after and back and know that this is a town that is welcoming of, of different forms of recreation like that? Or go hiking, these are all, or surfing, like, there's so many recreational activities. So it's just sort of showcasing that a bit more. Mountain biking, where we have the advantage, it's, it's also looking at our advantages, we have a year-round climate for this activity that other places in BC with acceptable conditions do not because they're under snow. So this is something that we could look at. In the off-season, we have a surfing culture that can come about, how do we sort of grab that for, and this might be, you know, engaging for different, different age groups perhaps, but there's an opportunity there, and then the hiking and all of that that exists here. And so there's all of those activities, and some are within our boundaries, certainly mountain biking is, although it's a CRD regional park, others you may have to drive to, like Jordan River, which is outside of us, but you have to come through us to get there. And there's those unique opportunities to build on. And then there's even some artists now that are doing exceptional work with, with logged product, with like the stump hitch, I guess, or what is left behind, that is creating new things with that and new art forms and the like. So I think there's a real opportunity to also showcase this recreational piece and what that looks like. Counselor Logan?
Yes, to add on what you're saying and also to speak for Counselor McMath, who's not here, I know she would say, develop local economy is something that would be huge on her list. And to add to that and sort of touch on what Mayor Tate was saying, we don't really take advantage- advantage of our huge potential for work-life balance in this community. It's mostly work, 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 commute, 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 even though we live in such a beautiful area. So if we can develop the local economy in a way that reduces the commute as well as improves family connectedness and takes advantage of the outdoors, that would be a huge, huge vision for our community.
Counselor St. Pierre, then Beddows.
Just to follow up on what you just said, I do think that affordable housing, as Counselor Logan's is well aware, is actually one of the key things that I'm hoping that we can maybe address. That's a very big and very bold, and lots of people are working hard on it. But at the same time, land use planning does—is integral to actually having affordable housing. And I think a certain amount of creativity out of the box thinking that I'm hoping we can work with our community to achieve is needed to have affordable housing. The work-life balance is simply not possible when you're paying down a huge mortgage and having to commute. We need truly affordable housing so that people can actually have time to take a walk, enjoy their family, do other things. In order to be able to have a diversified local economy, we need to have people that can afford to take the jobs that are available in Suk. And generally speaking, tourism jobs and service industry jobs, which is what we mostly have, are not going to pay for a large mortgage. We've got Route 14 choked. We know that's a problem. I don't see any way out other than really pushing hard for affordable housing, and I don't know what can come out of the OCP process in terms of that, but I think that's going to be critical.
Zoning for work from home.
That's one start.
Yeah, and it is that work from home. And also, just some conversations I've had with with others is what is the future of the workplace like? You know, when you think of all the built-up commercial spaces in Vancouver and the like, and I'm hearing now that because many can work successfully from home, there's no longer a need to stay in the one-bedroom suite in Toronto or downtown Vancouver or wherever. You can move anywhere where there's internet services and actually get out of that urban lifestyle and get into and get into a better lifestyle somewhere else, you know? So that's all great. But then we also want to ensure that our own community still has housing stock. So this is the—I'm still not sure what the problem statement is. I'm hearing that real estate is moving very quickly, and—which is interesting in a pandemic because there are many people that are still suffering out there with the impact of COVID. But others—not everybody is, and so they're buying up real estate. And is that driving up the market price here so that our residents are stuck in where they are? Making the—making it that more difficult to—for people to get into housing because they're competing in not necessarily with folks that are even offshore, but with Toronto and Vancouver that are that are coming in with greater amount of equity as opposed to, say, someone here who's just trying to get out of their parents' basement and move into house. But then there's this cost pressure occurring. So that's the affordability piece. You know, at one time, I think we had a wide range of housing stock, and that's all changed. And even now, there's pressure for folks more to rent here and commute back into town, which doesn't—again, puts more congestion on the highway, and it still doesn't—it still drives up the price of rent everywhere because of the competition. So I just want to make sure that our residents are not priced out of Suk, that they will be able to continue to remain here and for seniors to be able to continue to live independently as long as they can and still have that variety for families that need a bit more space because they're adding on to their family or whatever can continue to do that. And then they're not suddenly having to go to a more affordable, like leave everything behind because they're pushed out of the market because of this other pressure that's occurring. Counselor St. Pierre?
This is going in a slightly different direction, but—and I don't know if it's actually something to be addressed here, but I would like to see what the district can do to wean itself off a growth economy and property taxes in terms of actually paying for everything. We're actually kind of stuck in that we more or less need a certain amount of growth in order to keep on affording to do things. And I know, for example, the city of Nelson, over a period of decades, has set up its own power utility, and that's, you know, it has income coming in that direction. And I know that our options are fairly limited because of the municipal charter. But I'd be interested in seeing what we can do to position ourselves so that we're not entirely dependent on property taxes in order to do our business, in order to, you know, build the community. And I'm curious to see whether or not that's a conversation we can have during this process.
Counselor Beddows?
I just wanted to double back, but we seemed to went off a number of different tangents, and that was the economic part. And Counselor McMath and Counselor Logan's and yourself alluded to it. One thing that we need need to capture is that we're the gateway to the west coast of the island here, and it is such a marketing tool. And my concern is if we miss that boat, Langford is going to take that crown, and we will be a destination on the west coast as opposed to the kickoff place. And there's a lot of economic value there. We don't have—we can sell ourselves. I mean, Suk is beautiful, and you just need to, as your son said, turn his head, see what a great spot. But all those places west of us, you know, Jordan River and all those places are totally undeveloped, and this would be just such a great kickoff place that people can come and and experience that rugged west coast. Because it changes right here. It changes for the different climate completely. And it is such—the tourist—I bring people from North America that have come here and toured them around, they're just blown away by it. And the more rugged it is, the more excited they get. So let's not miss that opportunity, and that's an economic one that we're really undersold. Anyways.
Counselor Lajnès?
Yeah, on that note, an idea that's been kicked around over the years is that if we were to have be a point of entry—we have—we have a beautiful harbor here that we don't—we don't use other than for fishing and a little bit of kayaking. And if we were to put a customs office in Suk so that we could become a point of entry, we're situated very close to Seattle. Seattle is a city that has untold amounts of money, and the people—people have yachts and boats, and they come in to Canada. The only entry point is Victoria. Once they come to Victoria, they—they head on up the island, go around the island, up the north coast. If we were to have a customs office here, and that can be done by having—we do have a post office. If if one of the employees of the post office were certified as a customs officer, they could—if somebody wants to come in and clear customs, they just have to call, and a person can go from the post office down to the wharf and and admit them to Canada. Not for a while. They need to clean up their act down there now, but it's something to think about for the future. And if we're going to be a gateway, why not be a gateway to the entire west coast?
The other item I'd like to add that I found really interesting in recent years was the filming of the motion picture elsewhere. So there's been some sort of smaller films, independent films that have been filmed in this area, but elsewhere was landed here in Suk. And so this sort of touches on the creative economy and all that that brings. So because we have the hotel now, it provided an opportunity for the entire cast and crew to actually be in Suk. So what I learned from the Film Commission is that the the actors are paid once they leave their hotel room. So having the hotel actually locate here has made more filming in Suk possible because they don't have to pay for the travel time. Also, they filmed in the off-season, so what that did is it kept a large number of staff employed at the hotel. So normally, these folks would have been laid off. They were all still gainfully employed in their work. The production crew was here longer than the the actors were, but we actually had, you know, some really high-end Hollywood stars here in Suk. They appreciated the privacy that that is offered here. There was no need to have additional security and the like. But what was also interesting is when you watch the movie, you can see so many of our local businesses in this. So they receive some revenue or rent to have their business used as a location. The the actors and the cast really liked staying here because they were all together. So you have both the the cast and the backup crew working together and building that team connection to make the the movie a success as opposed to the actors in one higher-end place, the crew in the other. They were all together. And it's—there's this—when you talk about the element of pride, when you actually watch the movie and you can recognize, oh, that's Home Hardware, Village Foods, or Academy Dental, you can see like, how many places do you recognize? Yeah, it was really neat to see that. And so with Vancouver really becoming the Canadian Hollywood and so many now made-for-Netflix movies being filmed out of Vancouver and so many of our Canadian talent being able to locate at home there, and even some that may have watched the Riverdale series, some of the crew are at the Seventeen Mile for the Sukapulua event on a regular feature and mingle with some of the locals there because of family connections, that they've done that for a number of years now. But there's so—Netflix has opened up the door for a different type of production that is very popular with the series. And also, Vancouver is is really producing a lot of—a lot—a lot of production is coming out of there. So what this does is it may create opportunity for young people who are interested in performing arts, but it's also all the other work that is involved with putting a movie together. And that's where it's just looking at what other types of economics can emerge from this. There is that whole creative economy, and I don't think that is overly bold because it's already happened. Obviously, things are disrupted due to COVID. However, the film industry will find a way to pick up and return, and I think we have a very beautiful backdrop for so much of the talent here. It's been proven it's done. Counselor St. Pierre?
I hope that this—not necessarily particularly big or bold either, but we have the Galloping Goose, which, you know, in terms of tourism and in terms of actually attracting people, I think is another significant asset. I think that if we can actually, for example, expand on business opportunities with the goose, things like rental e-bikes or whatever that might be, then we have the option of having a lot of people traveling on that trail. And potentially, if we can hook it up and integrate it as is planned, I think, with our Trails Master Plan, there are lots of opportunities there. And I'd love to see zoning and land use policies that would allow us to actually make optimal use of the Galloping Goose and of our trails network. And I think we're moving in that direction, but I'd love to see the OCP and the community having their say on that.
Mr. McInnes?
Thank you, worship. To quote Jim Collins, my big here at ASH's goal with this would be really to—whatever the vision ultimately is, is that at the end of this, we're able to communicate that vision to Suk and beyond. So it's powerful enough to attract the types of investments that we want. And from that, then we can look at things like our zoning bylaw and things like that and get away from using those tools as a regulatory tool and use them as a facilitative tool. Because really, you know, too often now, we look at those tools in a way to say no to something. But I think if we can get that vision strong enough and we can put out to the investment community, these are the types of investments we're looking for, and hopefully dissuade others that want to come in and, you know, build a little strip mall. That's not the type of investment. If we can get there and that that vision is strong enough, and then we can use our planning tools as a facilitative tool, that would be awesome, in my view.
Counselor Bateman?
Well, I just want to say I get increasingly excited when I hear our CAO, who we—the best thing we ever did to the consultants here was to hire this guy. That was our number-one achievement so far. And working with this group of people, it's exciting. Now, I'm—I just had a couple of questions for the consultants, because I know you're working with Ms. Letition here, and I believe you worked on the Callwood OCP together. So that's great news. And last night, I'm sure the mayor will will speak about the OCP Steering Committee, who you will be working with. My question, looking through your request for proposal here, your submission, I noted you chose White Rock and Granville Island as your two opening images. So on that note, I'm curious about when you given your big-picture perspective of communities across the island and the lower mainland and elsewhere, when you look at Suk, who do you—where do you see us comparing with other communities? Is White Rock a particularly strong example of a waterfront community that has evolved?
Well, I'll jump in. I'll invite Lucas to do the same if you choose it. Yeah, I mean, we—we're still very much learners when it comes to Suk. We've been there as visitors, but, you know, we haven't spent a lot of time yet, so there's plenty for us to learn, and we find that the engagement process with community, with yourselves, we're really illuminated. And so maybe I'll be better positioned to answer that question later. But as far as the image selection is concerned, we chose Granville Island because it is one of the projects that we're best known for. It's, you know, it's been—I think it's the second most frequented or visited destination in all of Canada after Niagara Falls, and we can't compete with Niagara Falls because that's a natural wonder. But I think what's special about that image, and I think relevant to Suk, and what I'm hearing in this conversation, is this idea of placemaking through authenticity. So you're not trying to be Langford, as you described. You're not trying to be another place. You're trying to be Suk. You're trying to be better at being Suk. And I think what Granville Island does is, you know, it's not an iconic, big iconic building. It's not fancy architecture. It's a series of messy spaces that bring together artists and craftmakers and food vendors who are, in a very small, human-scale way, creating places and creating a magnet as a result, very successful placemaking. So I think, you know, that's probably—that that's informed our thinking and its inclusion in the RFP, but I think it's also kind of resonating based on what I'm hearing from you today. The White Rock example is interesting because, like yourselves, they they felt like they had this incredible asset, this this thing that set them apart from many other municipalities is this proximity to the ocean. And yet, they felt like they weren't fully optimizing on that. And so a lot of the conversation as part of that process was around that. You know, the downtown, they said, you know, this is the heart of our community, but the waterfront, that is the soul. That is the thing that sets us apart. And so I can hear that maybe some of that conversation is maybe happening in Suk and could eventually, you know, happen when we when we open up the conversation with the broader community. I don't know if that answers your question, but just, I guess, some reflections. Lucas, if you have anything to add, feel free to jump in.
I was just gonna say, that's a poetic and beautiful response, Jennifer. Thank you. Also, just a note that I muted Jennifer Collard just because we were getting some feedback, so we can't hear the council room at the moment.
Okay. That maybe it's a good thing you didn't hear all of our comments. We're just sort of not—no, I don't think so. Thank you. And I think we do—where we're so fortunate is that we also have the river, which is, you know—
Salmon-bearing.
Salmon-bearing river that, you know, leads to the Suk Potholes, which is a very symbolic place for the Sauk Nation. And then, you know, all the interesting points along the way. And then, of course, and then, of course, you get into the more marine environment. So we have both of these, and then we also have the sort of mountainous topography as well. So I remember talking with my family, and my mom really likes the mountain view. My dad likes the ocean view. I'm very fond of the river, you know, like there's just—we can all sit in the same place and look at something and be very content with where we're at because of what we enjoy and like to see. And then, of course, the the deep forested areas as well. So there's just all of these elements, and that's why I appreciate what you're saying in terms of being just very authentic about what is what Suk is. What I don't want to see in the OCP is any other community named. So we don't want to be like X, Y, or Z. Like, that shouldn't even be in our in our vision at all because I don't think it's necessary. Thank you. Counselor St. Pierre?
Just a quick question in terms of whether or not this is—I believe this is actually going to be on YouTube and available, correct? Perfect. Okay. Because I've had questions about the availability of this meeting, and I think I'm really appreciating what's happening and the ideas that are coming out and the explanations from our consultants. And I'm sure that there are people in the community that we can refer this to, and I'm looking forward to that.
Okay. Other comments from anyone on this item? Okay, so we'll move along, please. Ooh, next steps.
Next steps, yes, exactly. So I just wanted to first thank you all for sharing those. So I just wanted to first thank you all for sharing those both bold and creative ideas. I won't, I won't try to summarize all of the ones that have been shared today, but I want to thank you for sharing that insight into your community. It's really helpful for us to build the foundational knowledge about your community. So in terms of next steps, there's a few things that we'll be doing. So one is we'll be evolving the engagement plan, adding more detail as we move through the project. And just a reminder to take a look through the community contact list to see if we've missed any groups or stakeholders. I know there's a few that were mentioned today that we'll be adding, but just take a look and let us know if there's any, anyone else we should be reaching out to. We'll also be hosting a cross-departmental workshop in August, so that will be internal to the district. And then we'll also be continuing the work on the first phase background research report, which we'll be summarizing in form of takeaways and we'll be presenting back to you in September.
Okay, so if we take this away and if we note any, we can forward them to you. The one that, number 21, where it says Suk Heritage, would that be the museum? Is that what that would be?
The Suk Heritage Society?
Well, it just says 21, it says Suk Heritage, so I'm not...
That should be, that should be the Suk Heritage Society, if I'm not mistaken.
So it should be the Suk Historical Society, which would be the museum, and then the only other one I can think of right now is the EMCS Society. So our, our secondary school is a community school that has its own separate society there, so while there, and there's, then there's also School District 62, so I think both elements have a role to play here. And there is also One Third Lions Club, there's the Suk District Lioness Club, so I would just recommend adding them as well.
Trying to figure it out, sorry.
But, but don't ask about the differences, I'll take that from the lion at our table here, thank you. Others, Counselor Bateman, please?
Yeah, and I've sent through a note about the Suk Transition Town Society as one of the stakeholders, and I think the Volunteer Centre is also significant, but they're part of the Suk Family Resource Society.
They're not.
Oh, they're not?
They're part of Searchen.
Oh, Searchen, okay.
Yeah.
And they're on our list, okay.
Thank you for that, yeah, we've added to the updated list the Transition Suk.
The other one, is there a way, like, there isn't a Building and Development Association that I'm aware of at the moment. So while there is the Suk Region Chamber of Commerce, it's like, what about the Building and Development Community? I'm not aware of an association, though, but I think it is important to engage with our local builders and developers and also our realtors. So what that would, whether that's the Victoria, like, I just don't know of, like, a Suk division of the Victoria Real Estate Board, or if there's another sort of catch-all that, but I think they're, the realtors, the builders, the developers, I just can't think, an association doesn't come to mind that they would be under.
Just a point, you know, remember we had that little dispute, we had 30 builders in this room? So if you put a call out to just the builders, however they're going to do it, I think they would come and droves.
Yeah. Ms. Lucision?
Just to follow up on that, we are compiling a list of contractors and builders that are working locally in Suk right now.
Okay.
So that's part of the work that we're completing, so we'll send out communication in a mass way at the beginning, and then we'll look for input and feedback back from that, and we'll, you know, pare down the list or make it bigger as we see fit.
Okay, perfect, that's great. Counselor LaGenes and Logans?
Yeah, also, I don't see the Suk community, oh, yeah, there they are, nevermind.
Counselor Logans?
There is a group called the Suk Newcomers Club, and they have probably, like, over 150 members of new people to Suk, and it's new, like, in the last five years to people who just showed up recently. I don't know how active they are right now, but I'm sure if you reached out to them, they'd be happy to share information in their network.
Are they a sub, a group that formed out of the Chamber of Commerce, or has, I think it might have, I don't...
Ken Stratford started it, but Terry Crystal was also involved, and he's on the OCP Review Committee.
Okay. Yeah. Counselor St. Pierre?
I'm just hoping that we'll be reaching out to the communities of faith of various churches, because that's probably a good place to touch base with a lot of people in a hurry. And wondering about social media, you know, various Facebook groups and so on, that's not my area of expertise, but they're large and some of them are very active.
Yeah, I just wouldn't recommend a group that's closed, because then everything, it's only available to members of the group, and sometimes the, it's up to the administrators to whether or not, who they allow in and don't, speaking from experience. And then there's also the Suk Fall Fair Society, I just think from a heritage perspective, they'll bring a lot to the table there. And maybe the Suk, our Suk Volunteer Fire and Rescue?
Suk Country Market?
Suk Country Market? Because these are all independent fire rescue services.
Economic Development Group?
They're in here, I think.
I don't think so. Economic Development Group? The Chamber is.
There's a few more. Counselor Logans?
I have one more on the tip of my tongue. The, and you might remember, the, is it the Trails Society?
Yes, the Wanda Fuka Trails Society.
That would be a good one, and perhaps even like a mountain biking group, sometimes they work together on things, but...
Yeah, there is the Suk Bike Club.
Suk Bike Club, yeah.
And then the, yeah, the GDF Trails Society, then they've done a lot of work both within and, in and outside of Suk.
And there'll be 10 more that...
Yeah, we'll think of more tonight. The Legion would be another, if it's not Branch 54 of the Legion? Would be another that I would recommend.
Suk Garden Club. But I guess we, we're, how do we, do we send our suggestions to you, Catherine?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, because then there's the Suk Fine Art Society, the Suk Philharmonic Society, Suk Music Festival Society.
Get the Suk Lions phone book, they're all in the back, all of them.
Because I don't see the Rotary Club, oh, yes, I do.
Careful, careful.
I just have to put my glasses on, that's my problem.
Okay, I think, you know, and I think that as we move through the process, if we've left anyone behind, I hope that we'll just find a way to pick them up and incorporate going forward as well. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, I'd just like to have a little bit of feedback at how you see the OCP Advisory Committee working with your committee. How do you see that structured, please? Oh, okay, what I was interested in, we just formed the OCP Advisory Committee, and I just wondering how it works in with our consultants here, what's the, sort of, physically, how's it laid out, how does that liaison happen? How do they fit in with some of, you know, your interviews with the different societies? Just a bit of a background, since I'm the liaison, and I sort of almost need to know what I'm doing.
So in terms of the advisory committee, we're definitely going to be engaging with them at various milestones throughout the project, largely when we have something to provide feedback on. So we'll be relying them on, to review content, for one, but also to spread the message and get the word out when we are undertaking community engagement, so relying on existing networks. In terms of the actual timing and logistics around engagement, that hasn't been completely solidified yet, but we are imagining that it would be done virtually, at least for the first phase of work. And then following that, it would be ideal if we could meet in person as well.
Okay, that, that does help, you know, you're looking at, to review content, and I just want to make sure that there, there is a lot of dialogue between those two groups, your group and ours. Thanks.
And as a, as a follow-up, it might be helpful to share the community contact list with the advisory committee as well, just to see if there are others even beyond this group that we've missed.
The Lions phone book?
The back page.
Yep, that's true, actually.
All your community contacts.
Yep. Okay.
We have some downstairs, I believe.
All right. Counselor Bateman?
I saw this note about a council workshop as part of your baseline Phase One. When might we anticipate that? And what would that entail?
So that was, that's today's session, so...
Today's session, okay. Well, there we go. Perfect.
Yeah, we've definitely, we've definitely received a lot of content to reflect on, so yeah, today, today was the workshop, just to confirm.
And in terms of those of us who are not, Counselor Betos is representing council on the committee, how do we engage as citizens primarily?
So the first point of contact for the broader engagement will be in Phase Two when we launch the online survey, so that will be done virtually, but that will also be complemented by paper copies of surveys as well, for those who either don't have access or would prefer that format. So that will be happening later in September.
So any questions or comments as we wrap up this portion here? Anything? Anyone?
No others. I enjoyed the comments of my colleagues. Yeah, I get a better understanding. Some of them are very complicated, so it's good.
Counselor Betos didn't have his microphone on, but to summarize, he did enjoy the comments from his colleagues and just the complexity that we all bring to the table. Okay, so for now, what we have here, we don't have any written comments from the public, confirming that. So here, the recommendation from, is that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the OCP Update Engagement Strategy and Work Plan Report be received as information. Moved by Counselor Betos. Anything further on the motion? Anything from anyone? Nope. We'll call a question, all in favor then? Opposed? And that's carried unanimously. So thank you very much for joining with us today, we really appreciated the opportunity to have this discussion and the dialogue together, and look forward to continuing our work together. And as we enter in September, if you, if you do need, as we talk about the school engagement and the like, I'd be happy to work with staff on that and reaching out, as we do have, we already have some communications in place there and some relationships already there, so we can continue on with that together.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, thank you very much, stay safe and healthy, everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Just to my colleagues here, I'm just, I'm really excited that we're at this point now. I mean, it's sort of a long time coming, and it seemed like a long time to me, it's probably not in the world of some of our staff, it's sort of routine, but this is a big milestone, far as I'm concerned, I'm pretty stoked that we're doing it.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Counselor Betos, and we look forward to your guiding leadership. Good luck with the committee, we have some extraordinary talent coming forward there out of our community, so a really solid list of committee members, so really looking forward to them meeting together and getting into this work together. Okay, so next up on our agenda is the BC Transit Suk Area Local Tran, Local Area Transit Plan. So welcome to Transit Staff, thank you very much for joining with us today, and we'll turn it over to yourselves, please.
Hold on one second. Okay. Are you seeing what I'm sharing?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Got disconnected there, so I think I'm ready to go, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having BC Transit here today. We are here to present the Suk Local Area Transit Plan, and this was something that Adriana and I had planned to come and do before COVID hit. We had a date scheduled, and then, of course, had to reschedule while we all hit the pause button, so we thought it would be remiss of us not to add a little bit in about BC Transit and a little bit around the pandemic and our recovery plan and what that's done to our plans for the future of transit and getting back to doing our business as usual. So the agenda, I'm going to go through some of these slides fairly quickly, but Overview of BC Transit Strategic Plan, that was completed in the fall, and we were planning to kind of come out to communities and talk a little bit about our strategic plan. So we're going to kind of tie that into a bit on the COVID response, how we plan to recover some of the ridership, and then move into, Adriana will do the Suk Local Area Transit Plan, which she completed the work on and hasn't been endorsed by the Commission, but we had a commitment to come to, back to this council when the plan was completed. So in terms of the strategic plan, the BC Transit Strategic Plan was approved by the BC Transit Board of Directors and was completed by BC Transit staff in collaboration with our employees, our customers, our local government staff, elected officials, Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, and all of our operating companies across British One of the things that came out through the engagement we did on our strategic plan, it plans to be the roadmap for the next five years for BC Transit, is that we are part of the solution for communities. So any of the communities that we talked to, whether it was larger urban centers or more rural communities, there's a lot of things that they have, that are unique to each of those communities, and we want to respect that. At the same time, there's a lot of problems that aren't unique, and we're part of a solution for a lot of the problems that councils and regional districts are facing today. So in the past, transit was just seen as a way for customers to get from point A to point B, but now, we're a part of the solution for climate change. You can see in this little description very quickly that how many vehicles you get off the road has a direct correspondence to lowering emissions, so we can be a part of that solution. We're part of the solution for safety, so it is a safe space for folks to travel on. We also have professional drivers that are, they're trained both to deescalate situations that may occur on the bus and also as safe drivers. So, you know, with all the motor vehicle accidents that happen across the province, BC Transit has a very low rate of incidents and is one of the safest modes of transportation folks could take. We're a solution for social isolation, so in rural communities, you know, there's a need to get into more urban centers for employment, for some cases, for medical appointments, and for people to be able to visit family in other communities. So as people want to age at home, transit's part of that solution that enables them to do that. And affordability, of course, there's only so many dollars to go in each household, and people have to spend their money on housing, which has been, we know, affordable housing's been a crisis in many communities over the recent time. Food and other things have continued to be considerations that people need to look at, but of course, transportation's a portion of that, and for a lot of folks, this is the most affordable solution for them. So we want to continue to grow transit in communities so that more people have access to that affordable transportation. So when we completed the strategic plan, we came up with a vision, your best transportation solution. And this vision statement really, I think, is the true spirit of BC Transit, of our employees, and of the optimism we feel for what we can provide for communities across BC, and the reality of what we are providing today that we continue to build on. Customers are looking nowadays for better ways... Customers are looking nowadays for better ways to move around their communities and ways that reduce emissions, that are affordable, that are clean, that are safe, and also create connections in the community. And I think we're going to get into more specific information when we get into your Sook Local Area Transit Plan, but certainly, community connections in Sook are strong, and definitely on transit, they are, they're strong in the community, so we're thrilled to be here today to talk about that. So our objectives out of delivering transportation services you can rely on are making sure we're always safe, that we put safety first in everything we do, that we have engaged people to support the, and achieve success, satisfied customers that will continue to grow ridership by making mobility accessible and enjoyable for everyone, driving communities that will continue to work with local governments and First Nations partners to improve livability, and responsible stewardship. We will use our resources widely and develop the most sustainable solutions we can. So I'm fairly new in this role at BC Transit. I've been with BC Transit for almost five years, but I am new working in the Victoria region, so my role is Senior Manager of Government Relations, and one of the things that I hope to do, and that COVID put a little bit of a pause on, was getting out more frequently to communities to be able to talk about BC Transit, some of the initiatives that we're working on, explain some of the great decisions that the Commission has been working on, and talk about plans and how they affect communities, and also get feedback on those plans. So we hope to have a little bit broader resource to be able to get out and do more engagement with folks across the community. So I'm here with Adriana today, who completed the Sook Local Area Transit Plan, and so we'll go from the pandemic now and into that plan. So of course, we were coming to do the Sook Local Area Transit Plan, which had been completed, and COVID hit, so for a while, we were under the banner of the province just responding to demand and being an essential service in British Columbia, and we had to figure out what that meant. I mean, BC Transit's never been designated before as an essential service. How much transit did we need to be on the road? Who are our customers during this time? Certainly, the provincial health officer was telling people to stay at home, so we knew that there was going to be a hit to ridership, but we knew at the same time, for some of our hospital workers getting to their jobs, our nurses and other workers, for grocery store workers, for many other essential service workers, this was their way to get to those jobs, and also, for many people, it's the only way they can get to groceries or get to their appointments, so we certainly needed to keep that running on the roads, and we were delighted to hear that the province felt the same way, that it needed to be an essential service. So you can see we've got that, the drop-off of ridership, recovery phase, we're in that phase right now, so we've been moving along with BC's restart plan, and as BCs open up, we've been changing our response plan, and then, long-term, we're going to have to look at our rebuilding phase. What do our communities look like in a post-COVID world, and how do we keep transit sustainable? So that's what I was saying in the emergency phase, planning to meet essential service by keeping our customers and employees safe, that was our first priority. And during that response phase, this is what the ridership looked like around the region. So this slide is depicted from Week 14 in our year, which was right around the March timeframe, when we started to see shutdowns for COVID, and then it goes through to March until the 20, Week 27, which is towards the end of June. So we originally, through that COVID period, saw about a 70% reduction in ridership in the core, which is the Greater Victoria area. The peninsula, Central Sanage, North Sanage, and Sydney, was down about 72%, and the West Shore, which is Callwood, Langford, Sook, and all the surrounding areas, were down only about 67.5%, so they did slightly better than some of the other communities in retaining some of the ridership. And then I've broken it down also by the type of ridership. So we have rapid transit, frequent transit, local transit that's high demand, and local transit that's covered, and then targeted. So the lowest ridership was the targeted transit, and that primarily was because it was a couple focused commuter routes that went for employers from Langford into town, and also, it was a lot of targeted routes that serviced high schools that, of course, then were closed during COVID, so that's why we saw, I think, the biggest decline there. Sook would fall into the local coverage, 69.1%, and then on the commuter one, the 61 that goes in, that would fall into your local transit high demand. So that shows where ridership was during the height of COVID. Then we went into recovery. So as society and the economy starts to open, we needed to make sure that we had the corresponding transit service increases to accommodate increased travel while maintaining safety of the employees and customers. So when we were originally in response mode, of course, we, we stopped collecting fares for a while, so we took a hit on that fare revenue. People weren't driving, so the Commission also took a bit of a hit on motor fuel tax revenue, which is another main lever for paying for transit services, but safety was the first priority. So we needed to make sure that while we didn't have protective barriers for the drivers, that folks would enter through the rear and distance from the driver. We moved back the red line where customers could stand. We were only allowing about 40% of people on the transit buses at the time, and certainly through this process, hindsight's 2020, we've learned a lot now. So now we've got driver barriers, so there's either a vinyl shield or a plexiglass shield going in in front of drivers. We're encouraging, of course, all users to wear face masks, and we are recognizing that there's no way, in a long-term viable way, that we're going to be able to keep that full six feet or two meters of distancing that would be required. So therefore, as Dr. Bonnie Henry has said recently, anyone wearing transit should wear a mask, so we want to try and still ensure that we're doing all the cleaning that we were doing during COVID. None of that has stopped. We're doing a higher level of cleaning than we've ever done in sanitization to keep safety first and foremost, but certainly, we need to get people back on the buses and have the amount of transit there for those folks as they start getting back to work, start getting out shopping, and as things indeed start to open up in our economy. So this shows a graph of all those weeks from Week 13, when we first were told there was a pandemic declared, Week 14, when people were told to stay at home unless they had essential travel, and then Week 17, when we started to see a few people going into essential jobs, and then when we started to get into the phased economy. So we now, this was as of a couple weeks ago, ridership was down overall in the system about 60%, and as of this week, as of yesterday, we were down 56%. So we can see that we're slowly climbing back up and do in part to people feeling a little bit safer in the community, that they can get out again, and also do in part to workplaces and businesses starting to reopen and us upping our capacity on their buses. So although I said originally we were at 40%, we then got to 50%, we're now allowing full seated capacity on our medium and large duty buses. Our light duty buses are still at 50%, but we're going to see how that goes. There's no standees, and like I said, we're encouraging all the hygiene practices that Dr. Bonnie Henry had encouraged throughout this to make it safe for folks to get back on transit, along with a full marketing campaign. So the current state, we are back to fare collecting and front door loading resumed on June 1st. We're managing the capacity on the buses. We have protective barriers for the operators. We're putting measures in place to support good bus etiquette. You may have seen our new advertising campaign, it's kind of fun and tries to really encourage wearing face masks to be a fun thing to do and to be a thing we do for each other. You know, we're all in this together, so let's take care of each other. And the next phase will really be for BC Transit, data collection and analysis. We know that travel patterns are changing, so some of the areas where we might have been passing people up because the bus was full, maybe the bus isn't full today, and maybe the bus won't be full again for some time if people continue to work from home or make other changes to their, to their work and their lifestyles. We're gradually increasing vehicle capacity, and we've just kind of finalized the fall 2020 schedules. So in terms of fall, we're looking at putting full service on the road, but in a very different way than we have in the past. So we're, we're running sort of a spring schedule, and then we're doing dispatch on demand as other things reopen. We know that, for instance, there's uncertainty around U-Pass. We were collecting revenue from Royal Roads, Camuson College, and UVIC. For students that enrolled there, they would get charged for U-Pass and be able to ride the transit system, but now, a lot of those institutions are going to be running primarily online, so there won't be as much need, so a lot of them will have an opt-out for those that are online, and that'll be a revenue challenge and some uncertainty around how much ridership will have from the post-secondary institutions. We're looking at, you know, service industry jobs. If there's changes to the shifts in where people are busy, it seems like peaks are leveling out, which is what some of these diagrams that are hard to see show. We don't really have a rush hour in the morning and a rush hour in the afternoon. We seem to have level service throughout the day, and a lot of industries are reporting that as well, that their rush hours have kind of tamed out a little bit and people are out more throughout the day. Changes in customer behaviors as well, we're going to have to watch what those are. Are people going to feel safe coming back on the bus? What's the attitude towards public transit going to be in the future, and what do we have to do to make people feel like it's a safe place to, to continue to ride and be on? Having said all that, I really want to get to Adriana and the Sook Local Area Transit Plan, but getting back to the strategic plan, you know, we, when we first put pause on everything and COVID hit, you know, it's been a scary time and a challenging time for all of us, but one of the things that we reflect on now is that we're still part of the solution. So our strategic plan, although it was a five-year vision, and we thought, what does that mean to us today? When we read through it, and it's available online at BC Transit.com in its entirety, it still is going to be a solution for communities to support economic recovery, to address the same community challenges around climate change, social isolation, traffic congestion, and affordability, and to create vibrant and thriving communities. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Adriana, and then we'll have time for questions on all of this at the end.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Hello, everyone. It's so nice to be able to see you again. I was hoping to see you in person, but this is the next best thing, and I'm really happy to be able to have an opportunity to share the outcome of the Sook Local Area Transit Plan process with you. If I could have the next slide, please, Lisa? Lisa, next slide.
Sorry, Adriana, not to, not to move forward.
Oh, we lost her? Nope. Okay, maybe I'll share my screen.
Yeah, maybe try that. It won't move forward. Oh, there, I got it.
Oh, okay, great. So to recap, this is a repeat of some of the information you've seen in my previous presentations. We began our Sook Local Area Transit Plan process in fall 2018, and the plan had four goals. We wanted to identify opportunities for new transit serving local child travel needs within the Sook area. We wanted to identify regional scale improvements to help keep up with the demand and further grow ridership. We were also looking to establish the order of priority for the development and the improvement of new transit services over the near term and the medium term. And then lastly, we're also looking to identify the infrastructure that would be needed to support both transit passengers and also future transit operations. The diagram that's on the upper left there shows sort of the bounds of the Sook Local Area Transit Plan area, and then on the bottom, we have some of the different considerations. So as you're all incredibly aware, Sook has been growing very rapidly. The projected growth for 2026 is just over 17,500 people, and that would be putting Sook close to what Isquiemalt or Callwood are today. In terms of existing transit ridership, the Sook community is a very avid transit community. For trips that are being done outside of Sook, and this is pre-COVID, the community had over 12.5% of those trips throughout a 24-hour period being done by transit. That compares to 7.5% across the Victoria Regional Transit System. But if we look at transit trips happening within Sook, that mode share was only 2%. So that's a big part of what this plan is about, is helping to see how we can address that and try and really leverage the positive embrace of Sook residents have towards transit and bring that local mode share up a bit. Next slide, please. Lisa?
You're going to have to bring up yours. It's not, I can't get it to move forward.
Okay, great. Just a second here. This, this one up here.
Lisa, do you have to stop sharing for Adriana to start sharing her screen?
I think I can take it. Current slide. Oh, 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 no, okay, hang on a sec. Okay, I'm going to share my screen, and I think we have this on the current slide. Can you all see my screen? Or can you all see this new slide? How's that?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I have a thumbs up from Levi. Thank you, folks. So in terms of the context of Sook transit patterns, one of the other numbers that I crunched in the interim was looking at the actual mode share during rush hour, and this data is taken from the Origin Destination Travel Survey that the CRD does. It's from 2017, and what this tells us is that during the morning rush hour, 22% of the trips that are made by Sook residents to work are, 22% of the trips that are being made by Sook residents are actually being made by transit, and that is tied with the township of Isquiemalt for the highest proportion of transit trips across the entire region. And one thing to consider too is that, given the distance that your residents are commuting, many of them are coming towards the West Shore or coming further into the core, that choice to use transit really has a strong implication towards reducing carbon emissions, and, you know, it's great to see, and it's just really a great news story to share with you. And if we can move, oh, and so, just to recap from the last slide, that's 22%, but most of that travel is oriented outside of Sook. So a big part of this plan is trying to create the conditions where we can really bolster and create transit use within Sook in addition to continuing to support that transit use for people who are traveling outside of Sook. So next slide, please. Oh, sorry, I'm controlling it, aren't I? There we go. So for the engagement, this is the summary of the engagement. We had over 1,200 people participate in different types of engagement for this plan. We started off with our Transit Future Bus that we brought out to four different events in fall 2018, and as part of that, we had about 460 people in total participate, and that was the Transit Future Bus, which had 135 people, and then our online survey, which had 325 people. Following that, in the spring of 2019, we had two workshops, one which was held with transit operators who are familiar with Sook, and there's actually a lot of them who live out in Sook, so we were lucky that way. And then we also had a workshop that was held with community stakeholders, where we had 16 people come out and sit with us in the library at Edward Mill and mull over different ideas. And yeah, that was really wonderful. And then most recently, we were out again for some open house events. We held three of them in, in early December, and we had 69 people come out for that, and then we had our online survey that was also coupled with that, and that had 724 people. So, you know, for a community of its size, it was a really robust participation. We had a stronger online component, which was great because, you know, as much as people would like to come out to our in-person events, we know it's not always possible, so it was good to know that people took part in the online options that were offered to them. So coming out of that engagement, there were several types of considerations. In the gray, you see the local scale service considerations, so people were really interested in getting or growing the local route so that they could be timed to access the regional scale routes. And by regional scale routes, I mean routes like the 61 and the 65 at commuting times. And people were interested in using these so that they could reduce the need to drive to the park and ride, so again, less driving, that was great to hear. There was also a strong desire for hourly local service within Sook and late-night service on Fridays and Saturdays. We also heard that there was interest in bidirectional local service, and that's something that we'll definitely be working towards. Usually that comes a little later in transit development, but you'll see how we've placed it in here. On the regional scale side, and again, that's the number 61 and the 65, the routes that connect Sook to Langford and Sook to the core, there was a strong voice for more direct service to the core of Victoria rather than Langford. Now, this is a market that's already fairly well-served. If you look at the Route 61 and the 65 schedule, in the morning and in the afternoon, the rush hour service is very much already oriented from Sook to the core, and so when we actually looked at where people who live in Sook are going, about half of them are actually also headed to Langford of those who leave Sook. So that, there's an opportunity there to try and see how we can balance that between providing better service to Victoria, but also providing service to Langford, so people who work in Langford can get there at rush hour too, not just go right through to Victoria. There was also interest in better connections and trip times for people who are headed to the base, to Dockyard at Isquiemalt. to Dockyard at Isqyamalt, and better connections for people who are headed to Camosan, both Camosans and UVIC for post-secondary studies. And we also heard that there was a really strong desire for basic connectivity for the community of Beecher Bay and Spirit Bay. And lastly, we heard a really strong desire for earlier service starts on those regional scale runs. Now, as a consequence of this engagement, we actually were able to start the Route 61 half an hour earlier this past September. So in September 2019, the earliest trip departing Suk became a 5:00 AM trip, which was earlier than the previous 5:30 AM trip. So we were able to do a little bit for you that way. I will also add to this that the 61 and the 65 are pre-COVID, have been exceptionally well-used. They were reaching critical capacities. We were having situations of overloads and pass-ups on those routes. So, you know, the demand is there. People really want to use those trips. And we were very aware of that, and we were very heavily reminded of that during the consultation. Now, in terms of our proposals for service, we have three scales of proposals. So one of them is proposals connecting Suk and Langford and the Core. And this one shows a new proposed route that would terminate in Victoria but pass through Langford in the same way that the number 65 does, which is sort of along the Parkway. And then within Suk, what this route would do is it would do something a little bit different to what the 61 does. Your 61 focuses or does a loop sort of along Grant Road. And what this would do is provide a loop that would cover Church and Helgensen. And the area around Church is actually the highest density part of your community. So what this new route would do is it would enable access for those people to get right into Victoria. And it would also help provide a little bit of extra breathing room and access to transit to the 61 and 65, which are so heavily overloaded or have been going into COVID. On the regional scale route, we would also be looking to try and balance new trips between service to Victoria and service to Langford. Right now, as I mentioned, in the peak times, a lot of your service just goes straight into Victoria. And in the midday, it goes into Langford. What we'd like to try and do is blend that so that no matter when you're traveling during the day, you will have good service to Langford and good service to Victoria. The next layer is for the rural, what we're calling rural service. And this is a layer you sort of have right now. So you have the existing 64 East Suk route, and you have the existing 63 Otter Point route. What we would be doing with the 64 East Suk route is realigning that route so that it would no longer serve Sun River or Billings Spit, but rather that route would go from East Suk and then onwards past Beecher Bay and then into Langford. This would serve to maintain connections to the 61 and the regional route for residents of East Suk and also get them into town. And they would be getting into town a little faster because the trips would be staying right on Suk Row. They wouldn't be deviating up to Sun River or down to Billings Spit. And then on the eastern end, it would also enable connectivity for Beecher Bay residents right into Langford. That community is very oriented towards Langford. They currently use the 54 and the 55, which they have to walk quite a distance to access. And then on the west side of the community, we would be looking to realign the 63 Otter Point. So right now, the 63 also offers service to Whiffen Spit. We would be pulling the 63 right up to Otter Point and then also extending it so it goes a little bit further west. But it would be traveling in and out of Suk in both directions on Otter Point Road. Now, the development of these routes would also be paired with local service, which would then take over providing access for Sun River and Billings Spit and also Whiffen Spit. And that's over on this next slide over here. So you can see that there's three local routes here. And in hearing about your OCP plans, I was really excited because I can see how this can start to play into some of that. What we're looking to do is develop a route in the eastern part of the community, which we're calling the Sun River Billings Spit Route. And that's the green line on the map there. And that would provide service to Billings Spit, Sun River, Edward Mill, the Park and Ride, the Rec Center. And then we would all, on the west side of town, have a route that I'm calling the Grant Whiffen Spit Route. And that would take over providing service to Whiffen Spit from the number 63. And then it would also provide service along Grant Road. I know that the eastern section of Grant Road has a fair amount of density. And then lastly, that middle route, the blue one, I'm calling the Broom Hill Core Route. And that's one that would serve the highest density parts of the community, the Suk Core area, and connect them in with Evergreen. And you can see how there's super block, I guess I'm calling it, a loop, a little loop right in the middle of town there. That's the heart of town, and all three of these routes would circulate around that fully. So no matter where people are coming from, they'd be able to access any of the destinations along that sort of square. So that could be, you know, Evergreen Plaza, or that could be the new library off of Wadham's Way. See here. And then in terms of the infrastructure side of things, I mentioned that, you know, a big part of this plan is determining what kinds of infrastructure we need to support transit. Well, I was really excited to have an opportunity to participate in the Lorde Charette some time ago, and we were able in that time to help confirm that there could be capacity and opportunity to have a new transit exchange at Wadham's Way near the new library. Of course, we would continue to root all of the transit service along Evergreen or along Suk Road, where it currently roots. That is still the hub, and it will continue to be the hub of the community for some time. But when our 61 bus gets into Suk, it will now have a place to lay over for the drivers to, you know, go and use the washroom, have a bit of a rest, where the buses will be out of the way from the Suk Town Centre, which will then clear up space for that local service to use those stops as well. The Ministry of Transportation is working on its Connie Road Park and Ride Plan. And then there's also continued support for transit priority. From the beginning to the second part of the public engagement for this plan, the bus lanes on the TransCanada Highway came into service. And that was a game changer. I think as soon as people realized how much time the bus lanes would save them, they really became adamant supporters of that transit priority. And so when we were doing the second phase of engagement, everyone was all about bus lanes. So, you know, any kind of transit priority, whether it's a bus lane or a signal priority at an intersection that would help the bus get through sooner, those are pieces we would love to see, and we've put in the plan for Suk. And then also bus stop improvements. You're growing community. Right now, a lot of the stops are still opposed in the road. And we'd like to try and improve those so we can have pads so that members with disability needs can take take advantage of the accessibility features on our bus. And then one of the other pieces that the community was really interested in was some sort of a satellite garage. Now, that's not something that we can sort of say yes or no. We do need to conduct some sort of a viability study so we can understand the implications of that. And, you know, if it really would be cost-effective over the long term. But that is something that we have put in the plan, so we will be looking at that at some point. And then in terms of information, the 661 has one number, but it does about three different things. We know we need to renumber that and make it more clear so that it's clearer for customers who are using the bus. We also know that the rider's guide can be a little bit confusing for people, particularly in instances where the 50 interlines into a 61. So we're going to see if we can adjust some of that so it's clearer for customers. And then, you know, ongoing marketing and awareness. We're also cognizant that a lot of the signs in Suk are still our older signs. So we'd like to start working towards eventually refreshing the signage that we have out in the community. And then one of the other information pieces that we're working towards throughout the Victoria Regional Transit System is the eventual installation of real-time bus departure displays. So these are those digital signs that are up at major bus stops that tell you when that next bus comes so that you don't have to be, you know, relying on your dying cellphone battery or someone else's dying cellphone battery to find out when that bus is leaving. So those are the key elements of the transit plan. In terms of priorities, what we've done is, and again, this is pre-COVID, we had that critical extra service on the 61 and 65 at the top of the list just because we have been experiencing pass-ups and a lot of overloads on that route. So that was basically like the thing that had to happen soonest. And then following that, the next highest priority we had was the realignment of the 64 East Suk, so it would serve Beecher Bay paired with the implementation of the new local service for Sun River and Billings Spit. Those two have to happen at the same time because they overlap each other, and they also would share some transit resources. The next sort of set of local improvements would be the realignment of the Otter Point routes paired with the introduction of the new Grant Road and Whiffen Spit local route. And then from that, we would be looking to start introducing local service on the weekends and continue to improve the regional service. And then moving forward, we would have still some outstanding improvements that we would like to see in the medium term. And these would primarily be focused around continuing to improve the service levels of the local routes so that we could try and get up to that hourly level for the locals. And then also introducing that last local section, which is the blue route, the Broom Hill Core Loop that we had in the maps earlier. And then moving past that, we would eventually be looking to introduce the weekend service on those outline community coverage routes that serve the rural areas. And then lastly, ongoing improvements in the regional service and maybe starting to weave that regional service in with the local bus routes so that instead of having the 61 do the Grant Route loop and then sit for 20 minutes and then go into Langford or Victoria, passengers would transfer from the Grant Road local bus seamlessly, have a timed connection to get from their local buses onto the regional buses and not have to sit for 20 minutes before continuing on their way. Yeah, and that more or less covers it, I think. Is there one more slide? Oh, no, it's on. It's just the last slide, the question slide. Yeah, so if you have any questions, please ask away. And by the way, I wanted to also extend my gratitude to so many of you from council and who participated in the engagement events and activities and were so enthusiastic with your ideas for this plan. I'm really excited by it.
That's great. Thank you very much for taking the time to do this presentation today and just also sharing just the COVID impacts for both faces. Thank you. Just a question in terms of, because of COVID, my understanding is that some of this, some of the sort of plans for Suk were going to start this year, but then some of it now is being pushed off? Perhaps because of COVID? Or when will we actually see this kickoff? Because I know it's like short, medium term, but how far away is short term?
So I guess I could answer that if you don't mind, Adriana. So one of the things that did happen because of COVID is this year, we were expecting to get 20,000 hours and eight buses for September expansion. And some of those immediate priorities for Suk might have been things that we would have contemplated with the commission making a decision on moving forward with those. However, due to uncertainty around ridership right now and funding, those have been deferred. So it's still to be determined at this point based on those funding constraints and basing on giving us a little bit of time to do analysis of what everything looks like in terms of ridership and routes in the whole region in a post-COVID world. So it's, yeah, it would be premature to kind of speculate on dates. Yeah, and that'll come back to the commission to see if we're going to continue to put pressure to have expansion over the next few years and with the data that we'll provide about what things have changed. So we'd love to put a date to it, but unfortunately, there's just too much uncertainty right now still around funding and ridership.
Yeah, no, I completely appreciate that and sort of expected your response. I guess I was hoping that you may have had a crystal ball. Because that would be very useful right now. And I know that we've received the sort of federal and provincial announcements about funding for local government and transit, so still looking to see what that all looks like. So I guess with my question, I was just trying to see if you had any more insight than I might have. But I appreciate certainly where you're at. And then, you know, once this becomes a reality, I'm really excited about the the improvements for commuters, but commuters, not computers, commuters, but also for the local routes. Because the mode share is poor, because the routes just don't always work. They come by, but not at the best times. And then, as you know, they do a one-way service. So you can take it in, but you can't take it home again. So, you know, in some cases it works, and then in other cases it doesn't. But certainly having more loops, particularly to get folks to medical appointments or shopping, but then also they can plan on a return back is a really big deal there. So that's where it would just provide an affordable option and also encourage more ways to get to work and to provide those opportunities to work and shop and visit locally without having to take the car. So it just, you know, for those that like the pub, for example, it would be a safe drive home to meet with friends and others, or community events and all those things. Because parking continues to be a challenge here as we're growing. And one way of doing it is to provide an option. But right now, the bus just doesn't work to get people in and about Suk effectively. And that's why it's reflected in the mode share. It's just meeting the need and the service. So I really appreciate just all the work that's gone in here to recognize where the density is and where the routes are. Because I know for some, some will drive to the Park and Ride and take the bus in. But if it actually comes down your neighborhood, then you don't, you know, you could just take it all the way and not have to do that. Because some days, it's just easier to keep on driving rather than actually getting out and getting into and getting onto the bus. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for the presentation. Counselor St Pierre?
Thank you. Thank you. I've got about four different questions, probably more, but I'm going to keep it down to a dull roar. Some quick ones first off the bat. You mentioned the use of masks. Are the masks, are there any problems with mask availability? Are patrons just simply bringing the masks themselves, or are they being provided? Are there any issues around that, or is that okay?
To the mayor and chair, the masks, we have been asking people to wear them. And it was a little bit slow for people to have uptake. So we are asking that people primarily bring their own masks. But we've started as part of a marketing campaign to do some social media contests where they might win a mask and some other transit-related things like monthly passes. And then we recently, on July 21st, we had a street team go out, and we had about 20 of us out on the street and stops all over the community, including Suk, handing out masks. And now we're trying to get our supplier to get us another group of masks. So we'll do some of those activities over the few months and try to really get out there and encourage that use in a fun and friendly way. Certainly, we've had some people ask about whether or not masks should be made mandatory, but we're still following the provincial mandate. And that is, you know, that it, that people should wear a mask, but we're not going to enforce it. It puts us, our drivers, in an awkward position to have to enforce that sort of thing. And there certainly are a few people for medical reasons that cannot wear masks.
I have a further thought to share on that, and that's simply that it could be really fun to have masks with your marketing to get the uptake back on the COVID. There we go. Yeah, there it is.
I had it on, but he was focused, so.
The other thing was just a curiosity around, since we're looking at some potential delays before the local routes and so on and so forth, that we could have the nip and tuck on the bus shelters with further marketing options with the bus shelters. Traditionally, I've seen the bus shelters all sort of like the benches and so on with other types of marketing. But right now, you have your own messaging, so I'm curious as to whether or not you're going to take advantage of that opportunity.
I think, maybe if you could repeat the question, I'm not sure I heard in entirety. I think it was about using marketing in the bus shelters for COVID?
Yeah, I think that you recognized in your presentation that a lot of the bus shelters are, you know, basically opposed on the ground, and they need something more. But, you know, getting some excitement, getting some buzz happening around the transit service, but at the same time, using the available space to basically put forward your messaging and your marketing. Has there been consideration of that?
Absolutely. So we, again, when we launched that campaign where we were handing out the face masks, we had a team go out, and we have 2,300 BC Transit shelters, sorry, Transit Shelters, not all BC Transit branded ones, but across the entire region. We did put up posters saying, please, wear a mask when on transit, that was in line with the messaging we have with our marketing campaign. And on social media, there's a really fun advertising campaign that's going to go out on TV, and it's been on social media as well, set to the music of Safety Dance. set to the music of Safety Dance and showing people having fun and still looking like they're being really friendly while marrying Vass on the bus. So there's going to be other components that come out. And certainly, where we can put things in the shelters, we will replace that advertising material with new products as we see the need. So I think this was our plan for the first phase and that will continue to roll out as we see what the need is for encouragement.
Lovely.
And I'll just add to that, that we do have a shelter program where we help cost-share the installation of new shelters throughout the Victoria Regional Transit System. As far as I know, we haven't had any changes in the funding for that program as a result of COVID. But certainly, there are some shelter locations that might lend themselves to using the space for some awareness. If you are familiar with the shelters in downtown Victoria that have advertising on them, those are not actually BC Transit shelters or municipal shelters. Those shelters are provided by Patterson. So we, as an agency or the local government, don't necessarily have control over what goes in those particular shelters. Our own corporate branded shelters don't have space typically built in for advertising. But, you know, on as-needed basis, we have put up signs and posters at stops, as Lisa has described.
Thank you. I was also curious about the frequency of service for the local routes. I don't think that was mentioned, or I might have missed it. So on the Whiffen Spit, Grant Route, and so on and so forth, is there any expectation of how frequent the service would be and whether there'd be more service during rush hour periods and peak periods?
Yeah, so with the rural routes, we would be looking to implement the service change and either increase slightly from the existing level of service. So the folks who are living out in Isook and out towards Otter Point would definitely not see a decrease. They would like, I think, right now, they have four round trips a day on the weekdays. So we would be taking them up to probably five, maybe even more, depending on how many hours we can get out of this, or how many trips we can get out of the hours that we have. And there are a number of factors that play into how many trips we can get out of a set number of hours we have budgeted. Congestion plays a part in that. And, you know, as we see congestion along Sook Road, that may play into things like how many trips we get out of the hours that we have allocated. For the local service, we are ultimately aiming for hourly service, but it will happen in a phased approach. So, you know, when that local service does come in for, say, Sun River and Billings Spit, it will definitely come in at a higher service level than what is currently provided, which is, to be honest, very, very basic right now. It'll start at a much higher, it'll start at a higher level and then build from there. I think within the scope of this plan, we're aiming to get you hourly. And then from there, we'll see what we can do. It will depend in part how the ridership responds. You know, if we have a really strong, positive response from the community, that will certainly create a much stronger basis for further investment in those routes to get higher frequencies.
Wonderful. My final question at this point in time is just going to be around the social equity issue. One of the things that's clear is that, you know, COVID and the need to use transit is, you know, at least to some degree, predicated on how much money you're making. People can afford to get into a car, generally getting into a car, and they're managing without transit. Those people who have no other choice are potentially using transit. So I'm curious about the option about looking especially in terms of the local routes. And I think we discussed this before during the open house, at what the actual cost would be to actually provide either subsidies or free fare to certain demographic areas, for example, seniors, you know, so on and so forth, in order to get those people onto the buses and actually provide those services where they're really needed. These are essentially, the local routes are often not making a whole lot of money. And they don't necessarily, in order to get more service, you actually have to have uptake on the service. So I'm curious as to whether or not we get, there's any sort of transit study or movement in that particular direction, which would be making local routes more accessible while keeping the fares high for the, you know, to Victorian, Langford, and so on and so forth, to get people to their jobs and so on.
So through the mayor and chair, I think that first and foremost, the commission makes all decisions around fares for other regions. So that would be something that would have to come forward to the commission. Certainly, there's been a lot of studies done and some done by BC Transit on whether that is the best motivator for people to get on transit. Now, certainly, we don't want fares to be a barrier for people. So a few things that the commission has passed in terms of providing some sort of subsidy for folks is they work with the Community Social Planning Council and through that, provide passes at a discount. And that council provides them free of charge to folks in need. They, we also have the refugee program. So new refugees into the Greater Victoria Region receive free bus passes for a year while they can get settled here and try to find employment. And certainly, there's the BC Bus Pass Program through a different ministry, but allows for some sort of subsidized based on seniors and low-income and folks with disabilities. Having said that, you know, we still believe that riding transit is one of the most affordable solutions for people. And in most of the work we've done, we've found that what is most attractive when we've gone out and done research all across BC and every size community, when we ask people, what would make you ride transit? Very infrequently, if at all, do I see making it free or making it more cost-effective. What we often see is making it, having it in my neighborhood to start with, because some people don't have access to transit, or making it more frequent, because it doesn't work for me. And the other thing that people really migrate towards is it needs to be reliable. If I can't rely on it to get to me, to my work on time, then I'm not going to take it. So through that light, we've kind of said, those are the things that will really get people onto transit. Having said that, we don't want it to be a barrier. So we continue to work with these social servants agencies to make sure that people who don't have access because of income have some means to get on the bus. And we continue to look at that. That's certainly still a discussion, and it has come to the commission a couple of times. And I'm certain over time, that'll come up again. But the biggest thing from a transit perspective is we'd love to see some of those commuters, some of the ones that are already in vehicles, in single occupancy vehicles driving, luring them to get onto transit is certainly what's going to have a positive effect on ridership and also bring down GHGs.
Go ahead.
Just very quickly, I think my main interest in something like that would basically be as, it's kind of a gateway drug to public transit. Not necessarily a long period, not necessarily free forever, but it'd be really interesting, especially in the local routes, when they were first introduced with lovely new shelters and some appropriate advertising, if you had a period of time when local residents could actually get on the bus for free, so they could learn when the routes are happening, what the timing is, get used to getting on the buses, and then potentially wean themselves a little bit from their cars. Because otherwise, people have no reason to get out of the car. That's all there is to it. So I'm just curious as to whether or not that sort of push, even for a brief period of time when a service is first introduced, might be useful.
Yeah, certainly, in some communities. We really haven't focused on when we introduce a new route in necessarily being free. We've really advertised it more and sometimes had celebrations and had a lot of people out there to help people along on that. One of the other things we do provide is a travel training program for those that are uncomfortable, especially, we focus on high schools and seniors and go out with a driver and a bus and make them feel comfortable on the bus. But certainly, that's an option that we could continue to look at. And certainly, the commission looks at certain free days to try and get people onto transit and get them used to it, whether it's a Canada Day thing, which of course, didn't really happen this year, or some communities' Earth Day or Remembrance Day. There's certain days we experiment with free transit to try and get people on board and moving to where they need to go. And certainly, it does build some awareness around some being comfortable riding transit. But it's a great idea. So that's a good one for future discussion with the commission.
Counselor Betts, please.
Well, thank you, Counselor St Pierre, for leaving us a little room for us to answer some questions. I was sort of interested, and you mentioned a hub at Wadham's Way. And that really piqued my interest because of a number of reasons. Is this a dream or is it a serious consideration?
Actually, a very serious consideration. Sorry, through the chair. We already experienced capacity issues at the main Sook Transit stops right in the Sook Town Centre. And that is a hard limit for us to grow the service. So in order to add more buses to your community, such that local buses would be, we need a place to stage them and park them and have them layover. Layover is something that's built into transit schedules to make sure that they can stay on schedule. So should a bus encounter any kind of delay in its route, it'll have a little bit of extra time built into its schedule to accommodate that delay. But if it doesn't experience a delay, the bus will have some, needs to sit somewhere at the end of its long route. And so, the most recent master transportation plan that I believe the community has recently approved or is in the process of finalizing, I believe the draft version of that document does contain some indication of that. And there is a fairly deep boulevard. Now, is it Sook Family Services Centre that's across the road from the new library? Yeah, there's quite a deep setback there along the boulevard that would actually allow quite nicely for there to be some sort of an enhanced transit space. And again, we wouldn't see this as being the place where most people get on the bus. To begin with, it would be a space that'd be primarily used for the end-of-the-line routes and for maybe some connections between routes. Most people would continue to use those main stops at the town centre. But what it means is it would enable us to not have the buses parked there or stopped there for any length of time, which would free that up for regular service.
Yeah, I very much appreciate what you've just said. And for all those reasons, the buses stop downtown for, you know, 40 minutes. Keeping that space occupied would not allow for the smaller buses to run in and out. The other one I just will share with you, we had a challenge last year from councillors in the core city saying, take the bus to your council meetings. I tried to do that, but it would take me two days. And unfortunately, I'd have to sleep here at night before I could go back the next day. Now, I just say that jokingly, but it's a reality. It's some of these smaller routes, you've got four runs a day. And because they're sort of, I don't know, I wouldn't really want to call it inadequate, but they're very inadequate. And they, you know, people just can't use them. They just don't do it. But you're on it. I mean, you know, I really do appreciate your presentation, your thought of all these things. And I know that we can't instantly just poof, bring another hundred buses out here. Everything costs money, but I do appreciate you thinking about it. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. McInnes?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to get Counselor Betts' question. We did have the pullout on Wadham's Way as part of the library requirement. But they did argue successfully that they didn't think that that should be a cost that's 100% borne by the library. So we will be looking at opportunities as Lot A develops to getting that in there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Because I just think from the transit position in our town, it's a wonderful idea. We should pursue it.
Counselor Logan?
I just wanted to say thank you very much. I know this is a lot of hard work, especially, I think, Adriana, we met in 2017 or so when we did the Actives and Safe Routes to School project. So congratulations on getting this far and thank you for the presentation.
Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, I'll follow up and echo those thanks because I think you've dedicated at least 18 months to Sook and as Counselor Logan says before that too. And I guess, in the bigger picture context, I know it's all about service hours. And as I understand it, there's about 800,000 service hours in Greater Victoria area. We currently get 21,000 of those hours, which is about 3.5%. And after this plan is implemented, we'll be up to 6% of the total, or approximately 30,000 hours. So that's fantastic news for our community. I know there's some who were wishing for a Sook Special Express Bus that would run straight to the legislature. But it sounds like you are going to introduce as a critical first step is improved four new trips a day, 2,800-plus hours on two double-decker buses to, for rapid regional service. So thank you very much. And really, look, I know you've taken a big hit this year financially. What was it, $20 million in lost fares and carbon tax? Is that right, Ms. Trotter, approximately?
Yes, that's approximately right. For lost fare revenue during COVID and then over-fuel tax revenue. So certainly, we were seeking provincial and federal support. And it sounds like some of that support may be coming, but it's premature for us to understand exactly how that's going to come. So we're hopeful that that will be good news for all of us and we can get back on track more quickly.
All right. So the plan's in place and one day, we'll all return to normal. Improved.
A new normal.
The new, improved normal. Thank you.
Counselor LaGenes?
Yeah, thanks for all the work you've done on this. This is exciting news for Sook. And just have a suggestion. You mentioned at one point, getting rid of some of the post-in-the-ground stops and making them accessible stops. Something to keep in mind when you're creating accessible stops, people who use wheelchairs don't use umbrellas for obvious reasons. When you're walking on your hands, you can't carry an umbrella. And you get a lot wetter sitting in the rain than you do standing in the rain. And so if you could make those stops covered, that would be a big help as well.
Thank you very much, councillors. So a couple of comments. One thing I've noted from those that commute, with the rapid bus lanes, the dedicated corridors that are going in, there's been significant time savings that our residents are experiencing, which is excellent. So just seeing that continue will certainly help move folks that need to commute back and forth a lot quicker. That's been a real win. I was thinking just of the new route introduction. Because the new proposed community buses would all end up on Wadham's Way, I was thinking that perhaps when those come online, we could do a celebratory event here in the park of some sort, where if you, you know, run the free fare for the event day, try to get as many people in to our event and then they could take it home again or something. Because it's the proximity to our park here. So it wouldn't be that far for folks to get off and then come to some sort of a community event here in the park and then be able to enjoy the festivities and go back. And if they took transit, they, I don't know, get a free transit pass for next time or something. But it may be a way just to encourage folks to enjoy our park and also a safe way to do so and also get onto the bus. So that's just a thought for the future. I really like the idea of the Transit Yard. And with us, the earlier presentation was on the official community plan. So perhaps there may be a way for us to, for your staff to work with ours and our consulting team in terms of what that may look like in the future. So what this might actually be is for the bus drivers of many that live in Sook, they could actually just go to work right out of Sook to the Transit Yard and then start the route out. And that would be really exciting to provide that opportunity where it works. Or a bus then that would come out to Sook doesn't have to then go all the way back into Victoria. It could just stay here overnight. So I've no idea what would be involved with the Transit Yard, but if there was some way for us to examine what that might look like and may provide an improvement of some sort and certainly work for those that are employed in transit and provide some more opportunity of employment here. So just a thought for, because of the work that we're doing, that may be something to really examine of how we can realize that. And then the one other piece is just on HandyDart service, which I know is also ongoing here. I particularly think of someone like my mother who needed dialysis treatment, who needed to take HandyDart on occasion to get to the unit and all the way at Royal Jubilee. The challenge there is that it services all dialysis patients and she would be the last one dropped off. So that's a very long day for someone with an already compromised situation. Going out, it was, Sook was the first pick, so it was fine going out. But then after leaving Sook at 10 o'clock, finishes in dialysis at 4, wouldn't get home till 7:00 in the evening. So then, of course, it doesn't work well. So then folks are looking to drive or pay for a hired service instead of, because then it would need to drop everyone else off and then come out to Sook. And so when I think of those that really need to get to this essential medical service as well as perhaps folks that need to get to the cancer centre for radiation or for others, it's just something I really hope that we can see an improvement of in the world of HandyDart. In the core, you can get cab taxis very easily. It's $100 from here. Or at a minimum with a driving service, you're looking at a minimum of $35 for someone that's already on a fixed or limited income. So it's, and then even if you sign up for the volunteer driver service, you still have to pay at least $20 for gas fare. And sometimes volunteers are not available or they will only, they have to finish their complete trip by 5:00. And the appointment times are all over the place. So that's just another factor of... So that's just another factor of particular with an aging population that we really need to be proactive on. So I just want to make a pitch for more HandyDart services, please, for those of us in Sook that could really use that.
Okay, so on that note, is there anything further? Nope, so what I, Councillor Bateman?
Yeah, and I know, Andrea, I think you worked with our Transportation Master Plan team. And a couple of things that were identified in there was a park and ride at Grant and Ella on the west end of Sook. Did that make it into your Sook area transit plan?
Through the chair, we opted to focus on the one facility that the ministry was working on already for Connie Road. However, that does not preclude the district of Sook creating a park and ride facility of your own. In our regional systems throughout the province, most of facilities of that nature are actually initiated and managed by the local governments. So, you know, you may have an opportunity to there to partner with an organization. I did notice that there's a church parking lot near the bus route, sort of near the west end of Grant Road. And there may be an opportunity there for the district to make an arrangement whereby residents could use that during the week possibly to access transit. So it's something that we would gladly support, but it is not in the Sook Local Area Transit Plan.
And I guess also in that transit plan are these mobility hubs dotted around town with enhanced bus stops. But that's, again, something for us to proceed with.
Yes, and that's something for the community to work towards. And one of the other pieces with your OCP coming up that I just wanted to remind council, if I may, is that, you know, streets are not something to be scared of. If you look at our most successful communities around the world, they're often laid over little gridded street patterns. If we look at, you know, the city of Nelson, we look at downtown Victoria, we look at Qualcomm Beach, we look at Sydney. A lot of our most charming pedestrian transit friendly spaces, our transit oriented developments are laid upon a gridded street network. So, you know, moving forward, as you look to consider growth in your community, you know, please keep that in mind. Pavement isn't necessarily bad. It's how that pavement is organized and how it connects. And a nicely gridded street network gives you visibility and safe places for businesses, for people to stroll and walk. And it gives us transit route flexibility in the future. You know, today's residential street might be, end up being the core of Sook in 50 years. So we want to make sure that that network that you grow and adopt will allow us to have buses on it in 25 years. And cul-de-sacs don't quite cut it so easily for us. Can't take a 40-foot bus down a cul-de-sac. Anyhow, sorry, I'll get off my soapbox, but thank you.
No, that's true. I mean, I live in Sun River and there's a transit stop near me. I've taken that bus into Sook on a number of occasions. It's convenient for that. That was before I had the car. But eventually, life just got complicated and I needed to get a vehicle for other different reasons. But I still like, I like seeing it go by and there are more people on it as well, but they are just taking it into town. So I really look forward to, you know, the improvements for the commuters, but also just to get the local area network going. So we'll continue our advocacy work so that we can work to ensure that that relief funding makes its way into the transit system. And we'll certainly be doing our part for that. We can't open the economy without safe transit as a key part of it all. So on that note, thank you very much for the presentation and for your time today. We really appreciate it. If there's some way that you could share your presentations, that would be wonderful. That would be a great resource for us. So if you could make those available, that would be awesome. And on this note, I'll close then by looking at the committee of the whole recommend that council receive today's reports for information. Yeah. So moved by Councillor Beddoes. Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried unanimously. So thank you very much today. Thank you. That's excellent. Seeing that we have no public input on this and no new business, I'll call for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councillor Bateman. Anything to discuss on adjournment? Just wish you all good health as always. Stay safe out there. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried unanimously. Thank you.